Lyopoulos, who is our former emergency management director, uh, who has passed away last week, so if we could all take a moment of silence for Mr. Lyopoulos. Thank you, everybody. All right, Mr. O'Leary.
Uh, in the essence of time, I'm pretty well set.
You're up.
Well, I'll say, but just in relation to the BL, I mean, BL's been a fixture around the community for a number of years, volunteered for another number of boards, committees, and commissions, and, um, settled into the emergency management position probably for the last close to 20 years. Um, assisted, um, public safety officials over the years and devoted a significant amount of time and effort, kind of below the radar position, but very important and very dedicated to the community and mourned his loss with his family and appreciate all he has of service for sure. He was a wonderful guy and we were lucky to have him.
Thank you for the influence. Mr. Wallner?
Yep, just to remind everybody that the Swan Pond Trail access improvement showcase is April 24th at the Distance Learning Lab at the North Reading High School. That is on Wednesday night, starting at 6:30. It'll also be broadcast on NOR Cam. And so, again, the, the, the goal of the project, which was approved by town vote two years earlier, was to work with a consultant and to, um, uh, make access to the Swan Pond Trails, the existing trails, more accessible to the entire community, but not to deter or to change anything that we don't have to touch. So we're trying to keep it in its most pristine state, but also make it accessible for people to use, because what's been happening is without, um, people having more access to it, it gets abused. You know, there's motorized vehicles out there, there's a lot of things going on that, you know, would be better if we had the trails, uh, set up for walking and things of that nature. So please come, 6:30, uh, it'll be on NOR Cam, and we'll have one more meeting after this in May, I believe, or June, uh, before we finish with the consultants and move on to actually implementing our plans. Um, and the Commission on Disability has been, uh, we sent out 7,350 surveys to all the households, uh, 1,500 people responded, and, uh, so we had a response rate of 21%, which is very good. Um, and the largest response came from the adult population, uh, and I've been looking over the qualitative results right now, I'm working with Lil, our public services, uh, director, um, she's doing the quantitative part, I'm doing the qualitative part along with the crew. But, uh, we're looking at basically the, the older population was the people that had the most needs, and it really covered a wide spectrum of needs throughout. But, um, transportation was one of the most popular ones, so, uh, as we digest that, we'll come back to the board and to the community with a report on that and come up with an action plan about how we can deal with that in a proactive way. And those are the two things I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Manzelli?
Um, I just, nothing really new to report, but I just wanted to acknowledge our public, public safety departments, for you probably are, we're gonna talk about this too, Madam Chair, but, um, they've put out, put out a fire, we had a lot of activity going on, fire, um, put a fire on Gabriel Street, uh, no fatalities, uh, was a nearby firefighter, a fire member who was, who was alert to the scene, alert to the emergency, so that, um, was great response. And we had a lot of activity, uh, with the police department, so congratulations to Fire Department for that, um, response and, uh, police on Rogers Circle. I know we, we, um, it was a barricade incident a couple of weeks ago, too. We read, we read about it, but we should also just thank and acknowledge the fire, uh, firefighters and police department for the good, good and swift work that they do that avoids a lot of casualties. And, um, and a welcome to our little officer, McCullough. She was, uh-
You're still an always-hung-.
Sworn it this week, so glad to have her on board, too. That's all, that's all, Madam Chair. I know you're-
Can I, can I just add on to that, too? It was also really good, because one of the, uh, of the four families that were displaced, one of them was a senior with no family, no friends, and ended up with the Red Roof Inn in Woburn. And I, 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 Kim Manzelli, who's our director at the Council of Beijing, was immediately advocating over the weekend to find some sort of answers for her. I don't know what the result was, but I was very proud of the fact that our town employee was stepping up to try to find an answer for this person. And, uh, I'm sure there'll be a good outcome, but, you know, it's just really good to see people drop everything to try to help out.
Thank you. Mr. Sue? You go, okay. Um, I will just add on, um, congratulations to Officer Casey McCullough, our newest, uh, North Reading Police Officer, whose father was a longtime police officer here, and, um, I was able to attend and a little extra prize, and a female, I have a female state police daughter, so, um, congratulations to her. I was, I was happy to be there. Um, I'm also, um, the Veterans, the Veterans Events Committee was going to put a warrant, uh, warrant article to change the name of Parish Park to, um, Veterans Park or something similar, but we got a lot of feedback from that, from people in town, who kind of brought us up on some history that we didn't know about. There's, there's great history there of, um, how the park came about with the Girl Scouts cleaning it up and, um, actually a contest in town to name the park, which is how they named it. So there, I'm sure you probably know all of that, Ms. O'Leary. So, um, there were some passionate people who asked us to, please hold off and, and discuss and, you know, come to some agreement on the name and what to do. So, so we're actually gonna table that for June and continue the conversation and come up with a, something that makes everybody happy.
Listen.
Yes, that's right. So, yeah, and thanks to the people who reached out to me on that, so, you know, we don't want anybody to be upset, and if people put time and effort into something, we don't want to take that away from them, so I was happy that they reached out and that we could have that conversation. So, that was all from me. So we'll open it up to public comment, if there's anyone here who would, before I open a public comment, I'm just going to add that we have a pretty lengthy agenda and it's probably gonna go late, so, um, I might be limiting comment during the warrant articles and, um, budget, so if you have something you want to say, a comment or anything you want to talk about, probably would be better to do it now, um, so that you don't have to stay here all night waiting, Mr. Calhoun.
Just a follow-up to, I'm sorry. Just a follow-up to what you were talking about with, with that park, you might want to think about including Brad and Jean Jones in the, the naming of that, just a thought.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else want to make any comment, or?
Others who want to make a comment, not, not about, on the subject, but, um, you know, I wish there was some way-
I'm sorry, maybe just state your name and then-
Paul De Niro, 422 Clark Street.
Thank you.
I wish, you know, you were able to segment a certain amount of time, seven minutes, five minutes, or something like that, or after you discuss something and then say, open session, because you sit here, you have all, I, I have probably 28 things I could talk about, but I don't want to interrupt your flow and stuff, but when you talk about something, it's real and, and I'd like to discuss it, you know, what's happening, that's all.
Pat, please. Pat Fillmore, 24th Field, Chris Harris. And I understand what he's saying. I mean, you say we're gonna talk, you know, we're having the conversations about the warrant. Three-quarters of the people here don't know everything that's on the warrant, until we hear what you're talking about, there's really no public comment that we can make. I mean, unless you read the paper and pay attention to what's going on in town, and, I mean, I could say a lot, but I won't right now. But when the articles come up and then you start discussing, I mean, it is pretty, you know, it's, it's decent to ask anybody if they have any questions about it.
So, in response to that, Mrs. Fillmore, I'm, I'm not saying I won't, I'm just saying it might-
It's a lengthy question, no, I, yeah.
And a lot of people don't want to stay that late, so maybe if you have something to say, you might want to say it now.
No, and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, you sit there-
And then we will have further, we, we probably will be discussing this again on another agenda, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
We're also gonna be having a public hearing on-
And then we have a public-
But I'm just saying, you know, reiterating what he's saying, he's got a lot to say, but until he sees the stuff in front of him, you don't want to say anything unless you know what you're talking about.
I, I'm only saying that if you don't want to say, because it's gonna be late.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Sue?
And there is, since, since I got on the board, um, there is an informational hearing where that's exactly what it is.
Correct.
Where we, we cut out, we cut out a full agenda and almost, and almost exclusively on that agenda, we go through the fix, because the warrant's not fixed, and we go through with the actual, it's going to be, and prior to town meeting, there's an informational hearing where somebody can theoretically ask a question about every single warrant article. So that, that will happen, Mr. De Niro, just not this meeting, so just to clarify. And we do have that.
That's not what I was talking about.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's, and I didn't know you had that, I'd like to, I'd like to be aware of that.
So this is more of a discussion of the board?
Five minutes, five minutes, not per person, but the whole time, there's not that many people that get in shape, probably anyway, most, most times. But if you just limit it, it doesn't ruin your, your, your agenda.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, we do, we do have that interactive public, we advertise it, we've been doing that since COVID, since, since we did virtual, we, we kept it going after COVID, because there were so many people that joined virtually, and that was a great Q and A directly, it was an advertised public hearing, which is different than this. This is a public meeting with a public comment portion, so that's vastly different than an interactive meeting like you're mentioning. But we don't have to get into a deep dialogue about it, but we definitely do that before every single meeting. We now have, and that is part of our, um, process, where we do do a, do do a, a public hearing on the warrant, and we do it, invite people to join us virtually, and that'll be coming up on the floor, that'll be coming up soon.
Right, and that's what we're focusing on in that meeting, so, um, all right, thank you, thank you, everybody. So we'll move on, if everybody's set with public comment, um, and we're going to introduce the new Conservation Commission agent, so we'll turn that over to you, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Lydia, can I ask you just to come up to the front table here? So we're pleased to introduce Lydia Eldridge, who is our new, uh, new- She's our new Conservation, uh, agent, um, here in town. Folks know that our longtime, uh, agent who was a contractor, but really liked, uh, you know, family, uh, an employee here for a number of years, you know, that means, um, has left, um, and hasn't retired, but she's sort of scaling back her workload for a variety of reasons, so we tried to replace, kind of in kind, with another vendor, and that did not work out, and so consulting with the Conservation, um, Commission, uh, we created a part-time position, um, which Lydia is the first to hold. Lydia comes to us with, uh, education, degrees in environmental engineering, policy and planning, uh, and in wildlife fish and conservation biology as well, uh, as well as skills in environmental policy, um, skill, I should say, skills and, um, experience in environmental policy, watershed management, uh, and also GIS, which is an important part of how we kind of do the planning and mapping here, so. Just really wanted to provide an opportunity for folks here and at home to, um, see Lydia for the first time. Um, she'll, uh, she's been here in the town hall for a few weeks and will be helping the community as well, um, as needed, so welcome, Lydia, thank you for joining us and coming on board.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Lydia, is there anything you wanted to say? Uh, you don't need to, but-
Um, no, just thank you for welcoming me, and I really enjoyed my first few weeks here.
Great to hear, excellent. What, thank you?
Thank you very much. And you don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting.
Probably will be.
We won't be upset.
All right, well, we want to vote to determine useful life.
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you, this is a fairly routine matter at this point, um, you know, we will later on, after your presentation from Mr. Calhoun, with our debt plan and our capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2025. This action, this routine action is to approve the useful life for two items, uh, just, uh, the Havre Hill Chestnut Street intersection improvements and HVAC improvements. We're simply affirming the useful life of those items so that they can be borrowed in accordance with that, and I believe, uh, Mr. Wallner, you have a motion in course back.
Yep. Madam Chair, I move that the maximum useful life, useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with a portion of the proceeds of the borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed June 6th, 2022, Article 17, is hereby determined pursuant to GLC 44, Paragraph 7, Section 1, to be as follows. Purpose: Town Hall HVAC split, the borrowing amount is $120,000, and the maximum useful life is 10 years. And the second item is Havre Hill Chestnut Street, $480,000 for 15 years. And to authorize the clerk to sign the certification entitled "Vote of the Select Board."
Second.
All right, I have a motion, Mr. Wallner, I have a second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion on this? Are we done? All over?
Aye.
Is that something you want to say?
Uh, I'll go second.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yeah?
Am I interrupting you or something?
No.
Okay, so I, I know we have a hearing for change of manager, um, we're a little behind schedule, and the consul, Mr. Lab, is here-
Yeah.
-to witness the signing of the town election warrant. Um, it wouldn't be possible to take that out of order. And just for the record, this is the warrant calling for the annual election to be held Tuesday, May 7th. Uh, all four precincts vote at St. Teresa's Church on Winter Street in the Parish Hall. Uh, hours are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and I'm kind of looking to the town clerk, is there anything you want to come up and discuss in further detail, or?
Uh, sure.
You can say no, just-
You can go right to the table.
Good evening, Sue Duplin, Town Clerk. Um, we are still stuffing the ballots to be mailed out for the town election. Um, the last day to register to vote is this Saturday, uh, the office will be open 9:00 to 5:00. Um, I don't know, Mike, if special election dates, I don't know if we wanted to entertain maybe dates in June.
Maybe after the vote, if-
After the vote, okay.
If the board wants to have any discussion.
Um, so for a, we normally have in-person early voting that's mandated for any state election. It's an automatic opt-out for a town election, so we are not having in-person early voting for the town election, given the low turnout. Obviously, if there's a question on the ballot, we would do in-person early voting. But for this, uh, May 7th election, there is no in-person early voting.
Why? How you do?
Well, at the presidential primary, believe it or not, we only had 335 in-person early voted, so, so the town, I would imagine, will be a lot less, so, the cost of it and the hours-
What's the cost associated with, with having it? I mean, is it normal during normal?
Well, we usually do two nights, so usually, um, two nights till 8:00, just to give people who are working, you know, during the day, can't get here during the day, um, opportunity to vote, and a Saturday. So I would have to pay for, um, you know, the workers, overtime, whoever's working at night, um, that's really the only additional cost of it.
But personally, you know, I, I think the town should get in line with the state and federal, federal government elections, where whatever the methodology is going to be used, utilized for voting, should be consistent across the board, and the cost don't, does not seem to be extraordinarily high, um, so, might be bored, but, um-
Did I not hear you say it was an option, it's not mandatory?
So if you wanted in-person early voting, the board would have to opt-in, to vote, to opt-in for in-person early voting. Otherwise, it's an automatic, uh, opt-out.
All right, just, just me, I, I just, so, for early in-person voting, we have to opt-in, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not mandatory, it's something that we would be wanting to do on our own?
Mm-hmm.
How does the board feel about that?
Madam Chair, I move to, uh, authorize or instruct the town clerk's office to have off, offer, what is it called, early voting, but what's the term?
In-person early voting.
In-person early voting.
Uh, oh, Mr. Gilberto?
Sorry, I want to reiterate. Do you want to finish taking the motion?
Well, there's a motion on the floor, so, unless you have something to add.
You need a sec, you need a sec.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second to that?
That's done.
I have a second, any further discussion? Mr. Gilberto?
Right, first just want to clarify, I believe the statute says that the recommendation of the town clerk, am I-
Right, two registrars, yeah.
And it is not in your recommendation, that's why we're not here for earlier-
Right, that's why I'm not asking.
Just so the board understands that, it isn't just a straight-up yes or no, generally it's a requirement for a recommendation, it wasn't, I mean, this year it hasn't been made, last year either.
No, we didn't do it last year for the municipal.
Again, doesn't preclude the discussion, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, but to clarify that, please do. Mrs. Mani Pelli?
I don't, I, I, I would be in favor of the motion, but I don't think it's on our agenda yet, and we should put it on the agenda if we have time. And I really think you should reconsider that, because 300 people doing early voting is a large segment of people that, that voted, even though in the grand scheme of things, it's not, it's not a lot of voters, it's a significant number of voters, so I think if we can make the election more accessible by mail-in or early voting, we have the option to do that, I think that's something you should reconsider, making it more accessible and convenient for people. There's people like me that go in-person, and that's just, we're gonna do, always do that, um, but I, I do think you should reconsider that, because a lot of people can't make it that day, and that's a helpful thing for us to generate more, um, participation in elections, which is something on our strategic plan that we've been trying to work towards. Um, but, but I don't think it's on the agenda, so I think, I'm not sure if we can take the motion or consider it.
Well, I think it comes under the agenda right of assigning the warrant for the election, so I think it, it's broad enough to cover it there, but, Madam Chair, as I started to state earlier, you know, I think there's a need for accessibility as much as possible and consistency, so that people know from one election to the next, regardless of whether it's federal, state, or local, the rules are all the same, the timing's all the same, the availability's all the same, and we should just get with the times and let, you know, accessibility is, is important, and as Mrs. Mani Pelli pointed out, it's always been part of our strategic plan to ensure that we try and increase participation in town elections, and, again, I would also urge the clerk to reconsider her recommendation, or non-recommendation, uh, to do so, because it's contrary to that, it's contrary to our goal and objectives, and, again, it's, it's inconsistent with two-thirds of the other elections that take place here in the community.
One year, less than 300 people showed up for a part of the election, so that would be good, I, I, I know you're not taking public comment, but I would move you to hear from Mrs. Fillmore, who said every election, helping out every county.
It works at the election, I worked them off.
Can I say something? Please? Can you come up?
Sure.
Rick, I know we're violating, or we're-
We are violating, Mrs. Mani Pelli, I am appeasing, Mrs. Mani Pelli.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have worked the elections for probably, and I'm 72 now, so, uh, 50-some-odd years, and town elections have never been, if you have in-person voting, early voting for town elections, I could probably stake my life on it, you'll probably only get maybe three people every day that you happen. I mean, I don't think we've, you know, maybe 10% of the, if, if even that, on the last few elections, but even long, elections longer than that, back, way back. I mean, we have not had the people, people just don't, and I've lived in this town a long time, people don't really care, you know, especially the people today, you know, you tell them, well, let's go, oh, the school's gonna want this, oh, yeah, we'll give it to, well, the town's gonna want that, no, we can't give, you know, they don't care, they only have their agenda on the thing, they're not gonna care who's running, so you might get three people every day if you have in-person.
Thank you, Mrs. Fillmore.
Thank you.
I'm happy I let you speak, because you said-
Thank you.
What I was going to say, um, as far as, my opinion is that, it's not an opinion, the town clerk has the authorization to decide that, um, we are in a pretty tough budget this year, we're, we're talking about how tight it is, and I can't see paying overtime for workers to be there. There's an election day, people know when it is, it's put in the paper, it's advertised, this is when it is, it's from morning, it's till night, if you can make it, great, if you can't, you can't, so I, I can't see paying overtime to anybody for, for three people on the day that it isn't the election, that's just my, so, there is a motion, oh, yes.
We are mailing out, so everybody who's selected all elections this year is automatically gonna get a mail-in ballot, so we're talking, uh, like, almost 3,000 ballots, we're stuffing.
So there is an option other than election day?
Yes.
They are getting a mail-in ballot if they opted for that?
Yes.
So I think that's more than-
And that's-
When is the last day that, Madam Chair, through you, and so that option, when is that the last availability for someone to write to you or email you to seek a mail-in ballot?
Five days before the election, so it's, uh, Tuesday.
So there's still time?
Or is it Wednesday? Yeah, here's time. And then the town election, we had 7.6, like Pat said, uh, historically, the turnout is low, unless there's a question on the ballot, what have you, but for the presidential primary, we had 68%, so you're talking huge difference.
Yeah.
And we only had 335-
I think Mrs. O'Leary is in-
I was gonna say, Mrs. Mani Pelli's a draw. She's the draw this year.
335 coming in-person early voting was low, you know, and it-
So, I mean, it, I, I will just state again, I mean, times are tough right now, I, I just can't see spending the money for that, especially now that we know mail-in ballots are out there, so, but there is a motion on the floor, there is a second, if we're, do we have any further discussion?
No, I just don't think, I don't think the motion, because it isn't, it, I don't agree that it's a proper topic, I mean, we already talked about it, so it's too late now, but, I just don't, it's not on our, and I think we should wait to let that-
Should we withdraw it?
I'm not gonna withdraw it, no, I just, I think we should go on record as to whether or not we want to have accessible elections, and, again, the discussion has taken place, the clerk has made a recommendation, and we can give a sense to the clerk whether it's a good idea, a bad idea, we support it, that's all.
Mr. Gilberto?
Through you, Madam Chair, I certainly, no objection to getting the feedback from the board, I do want to ask the clerk, logistically, if I, I'm just seeing the calendar right, that would be, voting would be open this Saturday, and then five days of next week, right?
Yes.
Do I understand that calendar right, just so, is that-
Yes.
Just so that we know, if this vote goes through favorably, is it gonna even be possible with it?
No, because the board, well, first of all, you need a recommendation of two registrars, I'm one of four, right? I'm one of four, right? And yes, we'd have to start this Saturday, and then go through next week, and end on Friday before the election.
So we wouldn't even have time?
No. Not at this point, no.
Would you like to withdraw that, Mr. O'Leary?
Not yet. I think what's important is that the clerk should, in questions such as this, because I was unaware that we had an option to opt in or opt out, I think getting a sense, again, respect your professional opinion as to the number of people that may or may not participate, but we never know who's going to participate and what stimulates interest in the community. I think consistency is important in elections, and people should be able to consistently rely upon the rules being the same for every election that we hold in the town in our thread. So I would request that next year, with ample time, come and, come forth and give us your recommendation to either have it or not have it, so that we can have the discussion, and you can get a sense of the board as to what should or shouldn't be done.
I appreciate that. I was just taking into effect the cost, right?
And I appreciate that.
So, saving there, but I do understand the convenience, adding that for the voters.
The cost associated with running an election and giving accessibility to the ballot box is worth a few dollars for a little bit of overtime, in my mind. Then again, interest ebbs and flows. And again, what are we going to do if there is a ballot question in relation to, say, an override question? Are we going to be consistent with how we're doing it? Not have that? Or not? To me, I would hope there's going to be some consistency and have accessibility. So people's interests ebb and flow, depending upon the issues, and the candidates, I suppose.
Mrs. Manielli?
Can I just ask, do we have to do the full, like, the full one week, or can you shorten that?
So we're mandated to do a Saturday, well, six hours on the weekend. So you could break it up, three hours on a Saturday, three hours on a Sunday, but we usually do historically one day on a Saturday.
Okay. Especially at the church, right?
No, it's here.
It'll be here.
Yeah. In the gym. Yeah.
See, I didn't even know.
No. So again, Madam Chair, I would just suggest, before any town election, whether it be special or annual, give your recommendation to the board as to what you're recommending to us, the rationale for it, and...
That's fair.
And we should be able to weigh in on a timely basis. And with that, Madam Chair, with the, okay, if the person has seconded it, I will withdraw my motion.
It's okay with me?
Okay.
Motion withdrawn. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we do the election warrant?
Yeah, we got to sign now.
We didn't do that.
No, we didn't do that. We didn't even vote on it yet.
Okay. You good to go?
There should be a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to sign the May 7, 2024 regular annual town election warrant.
Second. I have a motion, and I have a second by Mrs. Manielli. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, you're going to witness us? Free act indeed.
See you.
That's a date, 22.
22.
22.
24. You say that. You say that.
Consistency matters. Consistency matters. It should be the same standard.
I'm not into voter suppression.
Surprised the state didn't come back and say, you have a conflict of interest, you know? I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah. Speak to the chair. Do you have a gavel? Use a fast gavel.
I've been doing it to you.
Now that we're going to talk about change of manager, Eastgate Liquors, now you know why a large segment of the community drinks, they watch us and...
Yes. We need them. All right. So we are going to, back to Eastgate, operating LLC change of manager. Mr. Gilbert?
Madam Chair, just briefly through you, we are here to consider an application to change of manager at Eastgate. Paul has a familiar face to us, he's been before us before, renewal time, for some other matters over the years, and I know everything was in order with regard to their application and the departmental feedback, and, you know, for us in the office, and we certainly know Paul had dealt with them over the years, and I'm sure things will work out favorably down there.
Move to approve change of manager, Paul, to Paul Robinson.
I believe there is a motion here.
Yeah, there's a motion.
There's a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of manager for the retail packaged goods store, all alcohol beverages licensed for Eastgates, will dot in our LLC doing business as Eastgate Liquors at 20C Main Street from Hearth Lynch Hotel to Paul Van Robinson.
Second.
Oh, I had three seconds. I have a motion, and I have a second, I will do it to Mr. Studo. Any further discussion? He's probably good work.
Actually, it's nice to see him back and forth, and back and forth, and stay in put. Paul's done a great job over the years managing the store, and in good hands.
Will, we have no issues with you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you weren't off the hook, yeah.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Received recommendations of capital improvement planning committee votes, including fiscal year 2025 capital improvement planning. And we have Mr. Calor at the table, Chair of the capital improvement, and we have our guidance director, Gloria.
And Vice Chair. And most of CIPC.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think you did get in your package some material, including a memo from the committee with kind of an outline of our recommendations, and then on another sheet, the detail of those recommendations. I'll go over quickly just the memo with the outline of the recommendations. We had a lot of requests this year, and there's over $16 million in requests, which is quite A lot of that was driven by some major items, the bridge on Chestnut and Park. We later found out that the bridge on Borrow's Road was in need of significant repair or replacement. There were requests for two new fire apparatus and a fire engine. So that drove this number up a lot. The committee spent a lot of time on this, we met almost every week going through refining our look at the items that were being presented to us, and finally came up with this recommendation. So we're recommending $4.8 million in capital acquisitions this year. The funding on them, and I'll get to other sources in a moment, but the funding on them will be about $565,000 from cash, and the cash is from what will be appropriated to the fund on, at June town meeting, and another $2.2 million in proposed bonding. We also have got available to us some other sources, and I'll get down the other sources and then we go over the items. The $571,000 is from the ambulance fund to pay for the new ambulance, and that's typically what we do with ambulances, we don't have to bond them, they're, the funds received from all the calls they make are maintained and are funded for just that reason and for other reasons as well. The second item on there is in other sources, a million and one, we're recommending that that be used to purchase the, one of the fire engines, the pumper trap, which is obviously is a million and one in cost. The source of that is the inspection and permit fees from the Pulte Revolving Fund. These were fees that were charged for inspections and permits, and this amount had not been spent, accumulated in the fund, and we thought that this would be a good use of those funds to take one big item off the list for bonding, or for any other source. Going down the line, there is some classroom windows that need to be replaced at the hood in Little School. This is a multi-year project to bring them up to where they ought to be, so that they all open and can provide some ventilation. There was $70,000 that had been approved a couple of years ago for a tent at the DPW yard to park some of the equipment. That was never done. Was it bonded?
Yes.
It was bonded, so we're hoping that we can, and that was a 10-year bond, I believe, that we can, we'll be able to bond the windows for 10 years, transfer that authorization over to, against this $75 million, $75,000, excuse me, request, and then use another $5,000 from the available cash to finish it off. And then the final item in other sources is to replace the sweeper, the Elgin Sweeper, which has been on our list for many years, it's being held together, it's not dependable. I saw it out on the street the other day, though, but it's, it needs to get replaced. It's a pretty old vehicle, and it gives us the ability to, number one, to maintain the, clean the streets on our schedule, and also be available for cleanups if there are problems with spills on the road, or trees down, or whatever other situation may arise, and not have to call in a contractor to do it. The funding source for that is the cell tower revenue, and it is using a portion of it, there will be still some close to $400,000 left after we do this, so we're not exhausting the cell tower revenue, but we're using it. We tried to be as imaginative as we could this year to get things funded. So those are the ones that are funded out of other sources. The others are going to be funded either out of cash or bonding. The first item on there is the Park Street Bridge across from the Sonic Lodge. That was approved for funding at a level, I believe, of $1,004,000 a year or so ago. And the latest estimate says that it's going to be about $130,000 more than that. We're also hoping and anticipating that we're going to be getting a grant from the state for half a million dollars. We're putting it in here for the full $630,000, because we need to get it done, and the hope is that we get the half a million dollars from the state, and when the construction is done, we just don't bond the other half a million dollars, so we just won't spend the money. The hood school roof replacement, this is again, a long-term project. The school have scheduled this out over three years, three or four years. The total cost is going to be about $1,200,000, and so we're budgeting into this year $200,000, which is what was requested by the school department, and in the projection out of the future years in the debt service calculation, we've got the balance of that in each of the appropriate years, so we should be able to do that, pay for it out of the operating budget through a debt service, and get that roof done. If we were to replace the roof completely rather than, this is more of a repair, major repair to it, it'd be significantly more money, but the school department's pretty comfortable that this repair will take care of the needs. Roadway rehabilitation and reconstruction, we cut this back this year by about half. A request from DPW was $1,200,000, we asked them if they could break that into two pieces, and so that we could get, keep on our program, but still try to get some other things done. We're able to do that, and we're hoping then to catch up over the next several years. We've got, we'll be putting more money in the budget in the out years. This supplements the roughly $517,000 that we'll be receiving in Chapter 90 funds. I talked about the ambulance. Replace the portable radios, the police chief had asked for $205,000 for this. We've had conversations with him that we can do this in two pieces, make this a fiscal '25, and then at the very beginning of fiscal '26, do the balance of the $100,000, he can oil them all at once. Again, trying to make things work. The fire engine, we've talked about. Technology instruction for the middle and high school at $105,000. The original request on this was $200,000. I'll direct you down to the second last item here. They've got a Ford F-450 utility vehicle that is literally on its last legs, or its last tires, and needs to be replaced. So we have proposed that we cut the technology down by $95,000 and use it for the replacement of the truck instead. The bridge in Culbit rehabilitation, this is a program to try to stay ahead of bridges that will fail, or may fail, in the future, so that we're inspecting them and doing whatever minor repairs we can do to them, and not have another, hopefully another Chestnut Street or Borrow's Road, but there won't, and this is an attempt to get that done. The computer equipment replacement for the information technology, this is the standard replacement of laptops, printers, and other computer item that for the municipal government, and includes everybody in that area. The signalization of Park Street at Central Street. Last year, the construction of, or reconstruction of that intersection was approved at town meeting. At that time, we talked about putting a permanent signal up there. There is a temporary signal up there now, and has been there for some time. What we're thinking of this is that people are probably used to it, and will want it there, so we're putting this on for consideration. The finance committee is going to vote on this item Wednesday night, because it will be coming back up within a year of the original request, actually a couple of days short of the year. of the year, so in order for it to be put back on the warrant, it has to have the approval of the Finance Committee, and I'm pretty confident the Finance Committee will recommend this. There'll be discussion, and I know there was some objection to it, but we're thinking that maybe the objection isn't as strong as it was before because it seems to be working. Time will tell, but we wanted to provide for it. The Police Department, we're recommending replacing a two thousand twenty-two Explorer. This is an admin vehicle. This is not a marked car, and so this is appropriate in the capital budget. The School Department, we're recommending the spending of thirty-six thousand dollars to do a study of the modulars at the Little and the Hood School. They are either at or close to beyond their area of usefulness. We're going to have to do something with them. We're not quite sure what. We don't even have an amount that it's going to cost, but we're authorizing, we're recommending authorizing the study to find out what it is we need to do and then to budget that as a capital item in the future when we decide, when the School Department decides what it is they have to do. Classroom windows, we talked about. The voting tabulators, this was requested by the town clerk, and we have a presidential election year coming up this year, and we thought this was an item that ought to make the cut, and it was. We've not talked about the next two. And the final one is interior painting and front wood cladding of the third meeting house and also doing some repairs to the bell tower. There's been some leakage in the roof there, some damage to the bell tower. Two hundred thousand dollars is the estimated cost to get it done. There is twenty-five thousand dollars left in last year's warrant article for building improvements that we'll be able to use, and so the hundred and seventy-five will be the amount they're recommending to be bonded. So those are the recommendations we're making. If there are questions, I can take them now. We're going to go next to what we're not recommending this year.
Any questions on the one on this?
Yeah, Mr. Keller, the cash item, is that coming from the capital stabilization?
Part of it is coming from the capital stabilization fund. Sixty-five thousand, four eighty-two is coming from the capital stabilization fund. In June of every year, we would normally get an amount from raisin corporate and an amount from free cash that's part of the plan, and it's five hundred thousand dollars. In the past several years, that has all come from free cash. I'm not sure what the source of it will be this year, whether it will be all free cash, whether it will be a combination of free cash and raisin corporate, but that is the amount that we have built into the plan for the last ten years and planned out, so that's money that we expect to be able to use. But there's not enough coming in, so you'll see in a couple of minutes, there's another sixty-five thousand that's coming out of the stabilization fund to fill that gap.
Can I ask Mrs. Galvin a quick question on the Pulte? Just a quick question. So can you remind us what we can use the interest generated on the Pulte fund for? Is that restricted, or can we use that for any budget items or operational costs?
So these funds are actually from the revolving fund for the inspection, like it came from, the source was the building permits and things? And each year, we appropriated a small amount towards the code enforcement budget for inspections, but most of the departments, like the assessing fire department, a lot of them did it while their, during their regular workday, so we didn't use as much. So this is the surplus left in that account, so what we would have to do at June Town Meeting is revolve the revolving fund, let the funds flow to free cash, and then use it for this.
Okay, that makes sense. I wasn't sure about that. Thank you.
Right, but the interest on the large Pulte, the sale of town and land, that interest does go to the general fund. It doesn't stay with the Pulte property. It goes to the general fund, and it goes into our estimated receipts.
Okay, that's great. But this is something different. I didn't realize we had that much of a surplus in that revolving fund, and are we expecting that that's going to kind of take off and we're going to need that, and what do we have in that fund right now?
There's about a million and one, just over that right now. We expect about another three hundred and fifty-six-ish thousand dollars for the remaining buildings, but virtually we haven't really needed it too much. Other than twenty-six thousand dollars that we appropriated for code enforcement, we haven't really needed it, so that's why we kind of felt it would be worth purchasing a vehicle. Would have made sense on a ladder truck, but that was too expensive, so we used it for the pumper.
Okay, that's a good use of those funds. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else, Mr. Waller?
Just a quick question. The Police Department twenty-two Explorer, it's only two years old. Why are we replacing that?
I think that title's wrong. I think originally they were going to buy a twenty-two Explorer.
Yeah.
They were replacing.
That's probably at least five years old.
A car five, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Usually their administrative vehicles are at least ten years old.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
You would have good reason to question that.
Yeah, well, I was just looking at that going, that...
I wondered maybe it should be twelve.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I assume you're going to, on the no list, you're going to be talking about the sewage connection from the fire department, Police Department, over to the school? Is that on the no list?
On the which?
We talked about, we funded getting a pipe from, getting rid of the septic system in front of the fire. Is that on the no list?
It's not on the no list.
It's not, or is?
No, because it was funded with Aqua money last year. It's on there, but I'll go through that.
Okay, thank you.
The downtown sewer project.
Okay.
Not to be confused with.
If you look at the last paragraph under Municipal in the memo, since the final item is category when we get in there is a contingency of four hundred thousand dollars the event the bids are higher.
Okay, so when we get there? Okay, sorry.
We'll talk about that.
All right, thank you.
So this is, let's go to...
Before you leave, can I just circle back to the grant money that you're hoping for?
For the Park Street Bridge, the half million dollars.
Maybe I'll refer to you, Mr. Gilberto, like, what are we hearing about that, anything?
Sure. Yeah, so we have a funding plan that relies on a five hundred thousand dollar construction grant. That's in addition to, I think it was a hundred thousand dollar design grant we got two years ago, so this just became a bit of a, you know, the timing. So we appropriated the construction funding for the town share of one point three hundred million dollars at the, through our, actually, now that I think of it. So we're going to be, you know, looking to go out to bid and to get into contract. Our design is progressing. The phasing is such that we need to apply for that grant this summer and expect to be told the results in the fall. We anticipate that we aren't going to actually need to expend that full six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that five hundred of it will actually be expended from state grant funding, and that will leave a balance of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is for engineering services associated with the project.
But we have it budgeted. My concern is just what they've been doing with the grants and cutting them in half and, you know, that is concerning. So we have it budgeted.
If we don't get the grant, we'll have to use this.
Yeah, we'll be ready to go, but we will need to borrow for that. When we were kind of hoping we would not need, at least not borrow for the whole amount. So it's a safety valve to get the project done if we need to. Hopefully that addresses your concerns.
Yes. Oh, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, just in relation to the set of lights at Central and Park. I mean, they're still going to...
Do you work and I'll let that?
No, I can't let it go. And again, maybe that'll be for discussion at Town Meeting, maybe there'll be amendment on the floor to strike it, but we don't need to, maybe, but we don't have to debate it here tonight. And again, to me, there may be, in my mind, other priorities for temporary, well, we have a temporary fix there right now, to spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that. We could be spending it on other things that we're going to go over now, which to me would be of higher priority, but that's for another day.
So you think there shouldn't be a light there anymore?
I'm not going to get into the discussion right now.
I know, but you brought it up, so...
No, no, I didn't. No, I didn't bring it up.
Because it's not appropriate for that thing.
I didn't bring it up.
Then it comes down.
The Capital Improvement Committee brought it up, of which you're a member.
All right, we'll debate that on the Town Meeting, too.
Right.
I think that's a, I'm glad to see that word in here because I think people, when it was originally discussed, and the majority did approve it at the Town Meeting, it just wasn't the required number of people.
Yeah, it was.
People were, when you heard this debate, they were very, very upset with the suggestion of a light there because they thought it was going to back up traffic for hours and hours and be a real disruption. And now with two streets closed, one being closed for safety purposes and that light being out, people can see in action and practically speaking how well the intersection runs with the light, and there might be some backup, you know, small times, you know, during the day, but generally speaking, it's really working out well, so I'm glad to see that it's a consideration, and I would fully support it.
And I believe the Police Department agrees with that, too.
Future issue, so.
A future issue to be debated. Okay.
So these are the items that were requested this year that are being deferred to next year. We just don't have the funds to do them. We can't do any more bonding than the two million and two that we've got in here. We don't have any more cash, and Lori Anne has tried her best, but she hasn't found any other sources. She's found a lot, so. So, I mean, you can read them. I don't need to go into details about them, but the third meeting house, there's some other work going on there. We will have to do some, the HVAC replacement when that work is done, and we're probably going to get some reimbursement from Ready Municipal Light on that. The bucket truck has been on the list, again, like the sweeper, for years. That's the bucket truck that we got from Ready Municipal Light. It's not tall enough, it's old. We would have liked to have replaced it at this time, and we asked it be ranked, which was the most important of those two to get, and it was the sweeper, so we've deferred this to twenty-six. The other smaller items can be put off the year, the push buttons, the cemetery expansion, the pickup truck for DPW Highway, they'll have to get another year out of it. Handicap ramp at DPW facilities, that's premature at this point with trying to decide what else we're going to be doing with the third meeting house. The interior renovations, this one, it's got everything, the floors, stage removal, cabinetry replacement. We've gotten a grant for the flooring and stage removal, so we're going to be able to go ahead with that. What's left here, the thirty thousand dollars, is the cabinetry replacement, and we thought that that could wait until next year. We'll get the big meeting room there cleaned up with some flooring and get the stage out of there and make some extra room. The reconstruction of Conket and Park and Southwick, in addition to not having the money to do it, we don't have the resources to do it right now either, and as much as I personally would like to see it done, it just is, it needs to be put off. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is just the reconstruction of the intersection. If we're to signalize it, it's going to add another four hundred thousand or thereabouts, but that will come back up next year. And the final item on here that we've deferred is the HVAC replacement at the police station. What we're thinking here is that if the Fire Department renovations of that building go forward, this would be included, although maybe budgeted separately, but a pot of the project and managed by the same contractor, and it doesn't make any sense to go ahead and do it now and not have it in a consistent kind of application as will be in the rehab fire station. So it doesn't have to be done now. It will have to be done if the fire station is, project is approved because the unit's going to have to come off the roof. So that, I think, can be deferred either to next year or whenever we do the override on the fire station, an amount for the HVAC for the police station side of it will be included. That's that. Now, the elephant in the room is the next one. Yep, there you go. Big, big projects I mentioned early on. We've got two replacement of, well, I thought I corrected the spelling on culvert, but I guess I did. Correct complement, whatever that means.
I don't know what was going on after that first line.
I typed this way. Anyway, we know, we know, we know, as much as we can know without having bids, that the Chestnut Street is going to be about four million dollars. Borrow's Road, we really don't know. We put a placeholder in there for four million dollars as well. Would be wonderful if it wasn't that, but it's not going to be, not going to be achieved, so it's a big item. Ladder one is a million and nine. We took care of the pumper in the previous couple of slides. This is the second piece of fire apparatus that we're going to need to replace. It's not going to come online for several years because it has to be ordered and built, but it is there, and we're going to need to deal with it and deal with the debt service of it. These items are major items for consideration in the override that will be taken up at some point because they won't fit into the operating budget. We approved four million dollars this year, and half of that was paid out of, found money out of other sources. We're only bonding two million dollars, only, but we're bonding two million dollars. There's no way in the world we could bond four million dollars and have it fit within the operating budget. The final item, and this is the one I said I would come back to, the connection, sewer connection from the buildings, town buildings downtown, to the high school, middle school treatment plant. There was an amount awarded out of Opera Funds for, yeah, I'll take a second.
One point two?
Yeah.
Was it one point two?
Yeah.
It was more?
Yeah, I got it right here. For a million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. When we started the budget process, and originally, when we were looking at last year, it was two million dollars. When we started the budget process, I suggested to Joe Berisi that we put in a contingency of four hundred thousand dollars just in case the new design didn't work and we had to go back to the old design. Weston and Sampson have looked at it, are pretty confident that, or very confident that that design will work. Their estimate, the last time we saw it, was about a million, a little over a million and two, saying that we'd maybe have about a hundred, two hundred, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars left out of the Opera Funds. We're hoping that that's going to be enough to get it done and that if we don't need all those Opera Funds, then you guys will dispose of them in an appropriate way. The four hundred thousand dollars is not represented in any spending that's in the budget, so that very first slide I gave you, that four hundred is not there. It is sitting here just as a placeholder, so when the bids do come in on that, and if it is two million dollars, then we're going, and we should have that before Town Meeting. it is $2 million, then we're going, we should have that before town meeting. We're going to have to go back and fix something in the recommended to make this work because you've got to do this, you've got to spend the Opera Money, and we'll have to find a way of pulling $400,000 out of the recommended budget, but we don't know where it is and we're very hopeful that if this 400 is just sitting there just in case and we're not going to need it. But I just didn't want to let it go and find out.
Find your 350.
Where it hits the fan when the bids come in and I go back and tell you, you know, we got to make some changes. You might remember this conversation. But those, that's the, those are the projects we're recommending. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, I'll just go through maybe one more. We do a calculation to see the fit of what we're going to be spending money on and how it is going to be, what the debt service is going to be over a number of years. This is what we're looking at in capital spending through 2032, exclusive of the major items we've already talked about. And you can see in this year, that's the 500, 65,000, and the 500 is the first two items there, the 65, as they say, came out of the debt stabilization fund to give that amount. The request for capital spending this year is 2,205. The big, big, big number in there, two big numbers are the roads of 600, they're all big, and the 630 we've just been talking about, which we may not have to spend. On the roads, we cut it back this year. I'm not sure you can read, the red line is blanking out. That says 900,000 under it. The reason it was red is when I was reviewing with the committee, our desire was to make that a million dollars and it just didn't fit. It just was causing too much havoc with the calculation of the debt service. I trimmed it back to 900 to present it to the committee and that's what we voted on, the 900,000. So that's kind of looking at, what we're looking at over the next bunch of years and included in the 20-year amount there is the rest of the roof at the Hood School. That's what that looks like. I don't, if you, this, I don't think, this is the calculation, I don't think anybody wants to look at it. This is just how the debt service plays out with each of the years. And then the last slide here, this is the capital improvement stabilization fund. We've got about $958,000 in it now. The next four items are just a wash. It's 500,000 going in, 500,000 going out. And then the next line is the, what we're expecting in free cash in October. And this is a program that we've had for a number of years, so it's $250,000. And again, I apologize, you can't read the red line, I'm never sure to use that color going out, but it reads 300, 350, 450, and 450. Big numbers. That's about either 50 or $100,000 more than the amounts that was, were in there when we looked at this last year. And the reason why is on the second line to the bottom, this is a stabilization fund. Our agreement with the select board is that what we're recommending in new debt service, the debt service for any given year, will not exceed $1,350,000. In order to keep what we're planning to do at $1,350,000, we need to take money out of the stabilization fund and put it into the operating fund. And you can see those numbers, a pretty big, we can manage with the 250 for several years, but after that, it gets, it gets too big. And we want to be able to maintain, you know, at least $700,000 in this fund just for emergency stuff. So that's what that is. The other option would be to increase the debt service, move it up from 350 to some other number, and then that would make the stabilization request less, but it's the same dollars, no matter how you're doing it. If we happen to have a wonderful, wonderful free cash year, we might do something different, but I don't think we ought to be planning on that and, but we ought to be, we don't need to do anything drastic for this until 2029, but just to be advised that we're going to have to keep increasing this as the years go on because things are just getting, getting more expensive. There is one, there is one final slide that is, I guess this is in your package, just items that are on the horizon and some of them are included in what you've seen already. The first four, five items, and the fifth one is Park Street intersection, Park and Southwick and Concord with a light in it. You've looked at engine, you look at the other engine, the Hood School roof we've talked about, a million two. The modules, we don't have a number, we're guessing at about $4 million, but the study this year will inform that. Fire station renovations, a ballpark of $25 million. Central Street sidewalk, which has been a perennial request that we've not been able to do anything with, about $2 million. If we take over the responsibility for designing Route 28 before DOT comes in and redoes the road, then we're going to be responsible for the design cost. They would be responsible for the construction cost. The guess is it's probably 2 million, maybe a little less than that. The bucket truck and sweeper, we've got the bucket truck and sweeper in, not the bucket truck, you've looked at that. Hillview Roof is in Hillview's requests this year. I didn't go through the enterprise requests, $2 million. Some of that may be funded from available bonding that has not been used. Intergenerational, that's down the road quite a bit, I think, and that's just a guest estimate, but it's something that we could be looking at. Third meeting house, we need to spend money there. Again, it's just a guest estimate, there's been nothing concrete on that. Town Hall, Damon Tavern, and at some point in time, maybe a West Side Fire Station. But there's a lot coming down the line. So that, it isn't just, you know, the, as I say, the dogs and cats of taking care of trucks and roads and computers and stuff like that that we're going to get every year and need to provide for, but major infrastructure as well. That's the end of it. Sorry it took so long.
No, thank you, I'm very proud. Appreciate it. Mrs. May?
I have a couple of questions on the Chestnut Street Bridge and the Boroughs Road. I think you had it a few slides back as the Culver replacement.
Yep. That?
We, I recall when we discussed, I mean, Chestnut Street, I think we, the town voted to appropriate design. Where are you coming up with that 400, I mean, excuse me, 4 million?
That's an estimate from the DPW, aren't you?
So it's not from anyone other than just?
Well, I mean, it's his estimate to us, I'm sure it's in consultation with their consultants.
What, Mr. Gilbert?
You're asking about Chestnut Street?
Yes.
So that's an updated cost estimate from our engineering firm as well, so that's a more reliable number than, for example, for Boroughs Road, which, as you may recall, at October town meeting, we went and sought funding, we were hoping to do a replace, kind of with, you know, in-kind type replacement. We actually had an initial discussion with the Department of Transportation, they seemed to be in agreement with that, and when they gave us their formal recommendation about a month or so ago, they basically said, we're going to need you to look more closely at a more substantial reconstruction project.
That was my next question for you, so, because we're well into Chestnut, I think Boroughs was an emergency that had to be handled, so this seems like you're projecting?
This is purely an estimate, I don't, we don't know, it might speak to that.
Yeah, so Chestnut Street is on the track, in a permitting process right now. We received Article 97 approval from the legislature and we have a, you know, what we believe is as reliable as possible, a cost estimate. Boroughs Road is in transition from being a quick, replace the pipes with new pipes, to something much more substantial and much, and similar to Chestnut Street.
So that's what I'm asking, because I recall for Chestnut, we were told, that's a misnomer, Culver, and that really the design of replacement, the cost of that was, because we really had to replace it with a bridge. And that's really what that was, that Culver really is a very large expansive area. But is that the same as you're telling us now for Boroughs Road, that it's going to have to have a bridge replacement versus just Culver under the road?
We have been informed that it's possibly a large box culver, which would not be a bridge, maybe an option for Boroughs Road. It was very early in that process at this point. We've done what we can to shore up the road and the pipes that are there within the DPW, but the feedback that we're getting in the permitting process is we're going to need to at least be looking at a box culver type solution there.
But is it, is it Boroughs safe to travel or has it been?
It was, it's been inspected fairly recently by the state and we have not been notified of any need for imminent closure, at least not at this point in time. That is what happened with Chestnut Street, as you know. The divers were, the state were there, I think, two weeks or so ago, and I think the initial feedback was that it was going to be rated a little bit higher than Chestnut Street was a couple of years ago, so we don't foresee needing to close the road at this point in time or in the immediate future, but it's time to be moving on a solution for the long term, so.
And we don't need for Boroughs the same type of legislative approval for any Article 97?
It's early in the design process. I don't want to make that statement and then find out we have some remote piece of parkland that's touching it that we need to deal with. Again, that 4 million is a, it's a very conservative estimate. I think it's highly likely that we're going to be looking at a cost that's less than that, but I just don't want to find us in a situation that when we get, we get to the point that we're at on Chestnut Street right now, you know, what today was a $2 million estimate ends up being $4 million anyway. So that's why you're seeing a more conservative estimate there.
Okay, I just have one last question. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, one last question on this. Because in the packet that I had, these numbers were tied to a potential override, so we're not, we're not asking for this to be approved tied to an override, are we? Because we know we need to do Chestnut and Boroughs.
You're good.
I'm sorry, Miss.
So, Madam Chair, through you, the top three projects there are factored in the funding plan that is tied to the override that was discussed at the April 10th meeting. It was part of the capital slash fixed cost component of that discussion. We're not recommending that we appropriate fundings for those three items at this town meeting and await the outcome of the override vote. I think what is clear is that our ability to absorb really any one of those three projects within our regular capital improvement plan, anyone on its own would likely wipe out the rest of the plan. So if, we know there's a lot of discussion that has been had and will be had about a potential override. Should the override be successful, we would have funding in place for the debt service on those three projects. Should it not be, then we will very quickly be returning to the town for a debt exclusion vote, specific only to those projects, because they need to be funded outside of propositions and they don't have funding in place to do it.
So we don't, or is there, for a debt exclusion vote, is there an alternative to that? Let's say the override doesn't work and the debt exclusion, what's the alternative?
So in any scenario, we will be looking at state hazard mitigation and, what's the term for it? Municipal vulnerability program, it's called MVP, it's not municipal, I'm using it wrong, but it's basically a program to provide funding for areas where there might be climate-related hazards, so rising water levels, additional water going through these culverts. We're pursuing funding for these projects actively right now, but we're going to likely need to be able to come up with the funding upfront in order to proceed with them. To answer your question, I don't see much by scenario other than, you know, looking at available funds that I think we've all identified for projects even larger than these in the future, namely like building-type projects, and I'm talking about Polte. I think we've all been hesitant to identify those funds for projects up this night until we've been looking more at the larger projects. And then, you know, I know Sewer has been one of them, but there are multiple large-scale building projects that we may need to respond for. Really, other alternative is going to be making cuts within the municipal school operating budget to pay for. And I, we just don't have a solution.
So Plan A, override.
Yes.
Plan B, debt exclusion.
Correct.
All right. Plan C, Polte.
I'm not prepared to say Polte, but maybe the board will.
I'm just saying, we have to have these plans in motion. Plan D would be, would Plan C involve, those get, they're on the top of the list, so nothing else gets done?
I don't think we can even do any one of them.
You couldn't. It would not fit, it would not fit within the operating budget debt service, not of them.
Okay. Just because we have to have contingency plans, I think.
We have to. Again, the plans are obviously not ideal in any scenario.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also, we have an, well, a study for some of the other culverts and bridges, so odds say that that list is going to grow, I mean, unless we get lucky, hopefully, I guess. So it's kind of just.
Our luck is thrown out though.
But, but again, what I'm saying is they.
Along with the money.
A lot of the, a lot of the discussions, as, a lot of the, kick the can out, I mean, some of these cans have been kicked for a while. And now, you know, to the point where, I mean, we're even confusing like by a decade the years of the old vehicles, because, you know, the scratchy's been done so many times. So it's something where, just, I mean, there's going to be a point where just somehow you can't just, you know, you can't just shut down roads left and right and keeping them shut, and the answer is, well, we can't afford to fix. So I think that's a reality. When we talk about even the upcoming override, that it's not a school problem or municipal problem, like this is a capital problem. And these are, you know, I mean, if you add it all up, everything, I know some are very, but everything here is things the community has said they want in one way, shape, or form. You add all these up and they dwarf any, you know, we had to give this union X and this union Y, or the fixed cost went up this much. I mean, these are some pretty big numbers. That's why, I mean, outside of us having the same binding authority as, you know, a state where we can just start to do whatever we want, you know, based on a AAA credit rating or even federal government, like, I mean, there's very, these are hard conversations. So just, if we have to get to Option C, that's, that's a problem, pretty much. And it's only going to get worse. I just don't see how this lives because a lot of the things on the second slide you showed, Mr. Kelleher, those are things that, I mean, eventually, like that bucket truck that we got from Redding Light, I mean, one day, you're, we're going to get a call that says, it's done, it's over. Like, you don't have it anymore. There is no more, you know, take it down to Ray and, you know, you can pull some magic and all that, it's not going to happen, you know. I'm just saying, like, eventually it's just going to be like, guess what? We don't have the truck, we need the truck, and now we need to find the 250 or whatever it's going to cost at that point on the fly, and we're not going to have a choice. So it just, thank you, Mr. Kelleher, because I think this is, this is something that's been, I've been referencing it, but your presentation tonight kind of puts it in perspective of like, this is what we're talking about with capital, it's not just a few things here and there. Because I was, I thought that's what it was until I joined the thing, that it was like, oh, a few things ready to replace, and it's like, no, it's actually a pretty big list and it's become, you know, it's like turning each other into pretzels trying to, I mean, you run out of, we do a ranking, and I think Mr. Kelleher mentioned it, but eventually everything becomes priority.
Yeah.
You can only rank something low until it's like, well, you know, now it's a, you know, Chestnut Street Bridge is a great example. I mean, it was ranked high, but we thought we could defer, and then we couldn't, so. So capital, that is where the money is needed.
Mr. Gilbert.
I do want to offer, just a comment, because I think it's, you know, Polte came up, I think.
No, it's going to reference you.
Something I do want to share, you know, the Polte funding, it's not my money, it's not the finance director's money, it's not Mr. Keller's money.
I'll take it.
It belongs to the town.
It's not our money.
It's not, not the select board's money. It belongs to the town. And it's, you know, within the limitations under state law, you know, town meeting has authority to appropriate funding. And, you know, we, we, again, as I said in multiple forums recently, we've been sort of looking at that funding as something that could offset projects with costs that are even larger than this, that the community has expressed it wants to see done. And I'm talking about an intergenerational center. Could be some, some component of a fire station. It could be some component of a municipal office building. Are we doing a third meeting now? We've talked about it as a potential component of a wastewater project, but we know that that conversation is becoming even more complicated as time goes on. My point of bringing it up is I don't want folks here or at home to think that sort of, we're telling people this is what it has to be, but we are trying to make recommendations in the context of knowing, you know, the list, it was small print, it's unfortunate, but it had to be 75 or $100 million worth of projects that were on that last slide that we know are also needed. So I just, I don't, I know folks get frustrated when they hear about $15 million in the bank, you know, for Polte, from the sale of Polte. And the reason we're apprehensive to recommend it as part of funding even these projects is because we know there are much larger projects that the community has said it wants, you know, to see done.
Mechanically speaking, that, mechanically speaking, I think that there's a follow-up to that, is that that is generating interest.
I just, that's what I was.
For which, when we borrow money, we're using that to pay debt service. So people don't understand that.
Sure, that's a great point.
That's why we're, when the town leaves it in the bank and it generates enough based on investing it, which that's what it's been doing, because we have good financial team here, we're using that money to cover project costs for which we bonded or borrowed, borrowed, basically. People don't understand that.
I was going to refer to our finance director of, you know, what is the average amount that we make on that money, you know?
Yeah, it's about, it's in the CDRE, right now it's making about $70,000 a month.
Yeah, so that's substantial, and it's something that we kind of rely on right now.
Just to add on what you both have said, we talk about free cash, again, not free money. It's money that was left over from last year's budget. Last year it was money that was left over from the year before. A portion of that is interest that we have been conservative about spending. So we're using the free cash, as Mr. Keller said, it's going into the capital plan, or it's going into debt service to avoid having to make cuts elsewhere in the budget. So there's a balancing act that we're all trying to employ, and we're not, you know, I don't think any of us are saying, keep that money in the bank forever. But based upon the long-term needs of the community and the interest rates today, we're benefiting significantly by that.
Right. So I think that's good to clarify for people to understand that.
Anybody else want to move on? One more fast question. I know Chapter 90 is, is just like to reimburse to us, is any part of that, could any part of that be used for Chestnut or Boroughs? Or, and I know we have the roadway program that's important to us that's on, but.
Yeah, it is being used for the roadway program. I don't, I don't.
To answer the question, there probably could be. I think the challenge that we've seen is that we're already underfunding the road investment program, and we have roadway surface rate data that tells us we should be putting a certain amount in. And this year we were light in what we put into it, because there's so much going on in the capital plan that is a, still the past couple of years, we were able to put a little more into it. So we're trying to sort of offset that in this year. So it is an option, but in the end, as we've discussed, it all comes out of the same buckets in the end.
We're taking it from one thing.
Yeah.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay. Can we move on?
Did you call them tonight? If I just.
No.
Excuse me?
May I get a call down tonight?
Probably not.
No, no, so that, this is why I requested that he did public comment earlier in the day. We did our board questions, hopefully that answered a lot of questions for people. We have, still have a lengthy agenda, we're still going to the town board meeting. Nobody wants to be here until 1:00 in the morning.
Can I have one minute?
I will give you one minute.
Okay, Mr. Keller, I'm going to, thank you very much. If you're.
Don't waste a minute on me.
Yeah.
I know, but the fact that you're honest, you went everywhere and found what this, what the town has and everything else, and we can see what the threat against it was very thorough business for you, so I really appreciate it. And I haven't felt this appreciative since that report, that was the most, most significant thing that I've seen. And just to your comment about, about, you know, all the money for the fire thing, if we weren't, if we canceled the wastewater, would you be able to cancel the distribution of that? Or?
We haven't done anything to cancel.
Wastewater is a hypothetical, that nothing has happened. I don't, I'm.
There's no impact on the budget.
Yes, at all.
It's had no impact on the budget.
No, it hasn't impacted on our budget at home.
No. It has not impacted anybody yet. It hasn't impacted the town budget, municipal budget, anything.
But I mean, if we, if we had a, if we had a, a, I missed my comment there.
Moving on.
Anyway, thank you for the.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the review of the town administrators FY 2025 municipal department budget recommendations. Is that correct?
I believe there was a motion in the packet.
Oh, there was, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Waller.
Sorry. Okay, so Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, the fiscal year 2025 capital expenditures is recommended by the capital improvement planning committee.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second by Mr. Stoudt. Any further discussion on that, Mr. O'Leary?
I will be supporting the motion as presented, but certainly reserve the right of suggesting any amendments at town meeting.
Of course.
Of course. But again, it's, again, yeoman's work as far as the capital improvement planning committee. Mr. Keller, as usual, has done a terrific job. Guides and support from the finance director of the administration is terrific, and to Mr. Don Arrows point, it was very clear and concise, and I hope as easily understood as it could possibly be, the situation we're facing with all the capital improvements that are needed. So again, applaud their efforts, we'll support the motion.
Thank you. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we will move on to what I said before.
Okay, Madam Chair, through you, we have a continuing PowerPoint presentation here that the finance director is toggling through. The first part, and I'd like to sort of take these agenda items in order, first part was to review the updated fiscal year 2025.
Just please be quiet, Mr. Gilbert, let's try and speak.
The 2025 revenue and expense plan, for all intents and purposes for discussion here this evening, it's unchanged from the numbers we showed you, I think, two meetings ago, or the numbers that we showed you at the April 10th meeting at the distance learning lab. So there's not a ton to report there, other than we sort of have our identified municipal revenue available number, that $20,023,860, which is right up in the business screen. So our task, in the first part tonight, was hopefully to try to identify what the budget would look like at that number. I do need to preface it by saying, as you know from every year, the budget changes, and we've got a couple of things that have happened in this two-week period that I'm not going to get into too much detail on, because we're going to review them at the financial planning team meeting on Friday. We've got a revised estimate from the vocational school, that's a little bit higher than we were projecting. It's not related to debt service, it's related to our minimum contribution for our operating costs. So that's one component. We've got some changing local aid numbers now with the house budget that has come out as well. So, you know, what we're going to do is work with the financial planning team to, you know, to push through what the impact is there. And in all likelihood, if there's a net sort of negative impact for the school and municipal budgets, we're probably going to recommend that the financial planning team make adjustments in our interest income projections, which we've been very conservative with for this current fiscal year anyway. So I don't want to get too far into that, but I just want you to know that that stuff's all working in the background, and we'll get updated if we come in for the May 6th meeting. The goal is to try to keep working at that number and for the schools to have their sort of similar revenue number available, which they're also working on at workshop meetings. As we said, I think it was two or three meetings ago, for us, you know, additional challenges that we have a request for, the four additional firefighters and the benefits associated with them, the finance director and I both feel that we need to recommend that we fund. What that does is take what basically was a level services deficit of $245,188 and increase it to a total of $586,902 for a shortfall. So to be clear, that means, when I say level services, we talked about a part-time assistant unit services director, that's not funded in this. There was a request for funding for an additional further subsidy for parks and recreation, that's not our current level services budget, that's also not included in this. Already been sort of taken up for discussion, and we still have this deficit that we have to reconcile to. We'll talk more about some of those things when we talk about override and that component, and what the future looks like. But just to be clear, we're sort of talking about rolling over the existing staffing that we have on June 30th into July 1st, with really not much that's new, really not anything that's new, other than the four firefighters, I'm talking about that. I don't think that's to surprise anybody, I think everyone kind of knows that that's where we were at. So the list you're going to see on the next slide is very similar to the list that we reviewed three meetings ago, when the board asked me to show what would a balanced budget look like. So we focused on some positions that are vacant, and that we've been able to sort of get by with in other, with other approaches, namely the grant manager position and the public safety director stipend. There are some items on there that, you know, we benefit from a reduction in salaries because of a transition that's happened after the budget was submitted, so that $15,000 savings is, you know, helpful for us. Reducing miscellaneous capital for IT by the amount of $12,000. Funding a radar gun that was requested for the police department, we did that with free cash because of the nature of the purchase, not being a recurring expense. The forcible entry simulator and the call academy that were reductions, we can fund from free cash to forcible entry simulator, but we really don't have a funding source for the call training, so that's a cut that ends up happening. And then Public Works, we had a duplicate request, we identified that's $8,000 that would come out. There's a generator replacement at the Damon Tavern that we can fund utilizing free cash as a one-time expense, that gets us to 16,000, and then an additional $45,000 in a position that we were in the process of trying to fill for the business manager in the DPW. That's a part of the salary, the other part of that salary is the water enterprise. And down below, we identified these without telling the exact dollar amounts. These are reductions that, when we look at the general trends, we don't spend the total amount of the appropriation, so it often ends up becoming either free cash, money left over at the end of the year, or somewhere we can transfer from in the budget if we have to, either in October or June. And so you see we have reductions in both police and fire overtime in the amounts of $80,000 and $50,000. The veterans benefits line would be reduced by $100,000. We've seen a significant decrease in that, and the challenge with it is you just never know what any one year is going to be, to bring. But we do believe we have the capacity to make that reduction. Reducing the salary pool by just under $22,000 to fill in inspectors for code enforcement, hopefully with the position, the assistant inspector be filled, we won't need to rely too much on that. Town building maintenance, we had been able to put additional funding in last year's budget, we're trying to carry it through this year, but we're recommending it be reduced. Reducing the fuel budget, it will make things tighter for that budget, no doubt about it. If we see any sort of variance with the pricing, that could be a problem. Reducing IT capital by an additional $5,000. Reducing the fire training and education building by just under $10,000, and then reducing border health professional services by $10,000. Again, I think that you did that, that kind of reflected what the trend was for expenditures. So I know that's a lot, none of it is pleasant to hear, but we can't go much further beyond this without talking about things that even more directly have impacts on residents or on employees here. Obviously, the most challenging situation we have been in, in, from the municipal side for, in a number of years. It's obviously very, as you know, very, you know, much more challenging in the school department as well. Not happy with anything that's on that list here. I think when we looked, again, when we looked at what the other alternatives were, and to be clear, those other alternatives will very much have to be in play in a year from now when we're looking at a budget, should we not have additional revenue come in, or I will be here talking about existing positions and a much, and even further direct impact on services being provided. And I don't say that, you know, not to scare anybody or anything like that, but I've been trying to communicate for a couple of years through the financial planning team what the challenges are. And I've said multiple times, our challenges are on the horizon, you know, we may be a year behind the challenges that the school department's experiencing, but, you know, it'll be, if it's not real here, it'll be even more real in a year from now. So we thought having this conversation was step one, and then once we've concluded this discussion, step two would be, okay, what would an override scenario look like when we go forward to town meeting? Again, these, these are, you know, the best recommendations the finance director and I should give you at this stage, again, they're not great options, we recognize that. A lot of discussion, thought has gone into them, and for both of us, you have the benefit of, you know, having been part to, in one way or another, multiple budget years, processes, and, you know, we feel like we kind of have a decent sense of what's going on in and out of the budget each year, that's what led to this list.
Thank you. So without, I know you got to the override, but yeah, we are, even with these reductions, we're still, we're still not balanced.
With these reductions, you would be balanced, but the limited flexibility we've had within the budget is all but gone. I mean, it's by that favor, Lori, and I don't want to overstate it, but, you know, we've sort of had, you know, it's not easy for us to be having a conversation about reducing public safety overtime. I know people don't like overtime, but for us, it's a very real thing. We're fortunate that we forecast, we have that flexibility in there, but, you know, whatever, you know, a bad, a bad stretch and that flexibility would be eaten up in any given year.
I'm sorry, does this, I'm just a little confused. On the previous slide, does this include the additional four?
So we cut further. This is a bigger list because we need to fund those four firefighters.
Okay, that's, this is, this takes the place of that. I mean, this.
Makes reductions to allow us to do that.
Allows you to do that, okay, thank you.
Which if we could reiterate again, why that is so important.
Yeah, please, that's a great question.
Sure, so, you know, for those who did not, and I mean, or did see it, but for those who did not see the fire department's budget presentation, yeah, this is at least the fourth year the chief has asked us for additional staffing in the department. And each year we see building pressure and challenges with our existing system of a combination of scheduled firefighters who are working a regular shift and firefighters responding, basically, when they're off to the, to different events, whether it's a car accident, a fire, or most commonly, operating our ambulance service, which is such a critical element here in town. And the chief is at the point where he's described the matter as urgent, that we need to really be looking to make a transition. It is a combination of factors that are out of much of our control, one of which is the cost of living here in town, how expensive it's gotten, it's more difficult for an entry-level firefighter to do so. So they're traveling from a further distance, you know, they may not be able to respond in a timely fashion, that's one of the challenges that's contributing to it. There certainly are others as well. But, you know, we've deferred this, to be clear to everybody, we've deferred this, it's at least four years since I'm deferred at this point.
Yeah, he's asked.
And I'm, I'm at the point where I. And I'm, I'm at the point where I, you know, having sat through the budget hearing, you know, I think what the select board and the finance committee really feel we have no choice but to proceed. And even with this, saying we're going to hire four firefighters, it doesn't happen overnight. We have to go through a civil service process. We have to get four qualified firefighters in the process. We may not get four qualified firefighters. We may have to train them. So it's not like, oh, they'll be here on July 2nd. You know, it, it could be a year before they're, they're here and able to fit right in. So, you know, the time, unfortunately, the time is now.
Thank you. Were we able to write for the safety grant for adding those staffings here?
So the chief has submitted on an ongoing basis. I haven't talked to them about the status for this current year, but I, I know he works with a, a third party for a small expense to write a competitive grant. And we feel we're a great candidate for the program, but the federal government has felt otherwise over the years.
And I think, you know, once four firefighters are here, there'll be less overtime needing to be used.
And I don't want to derail us too much, but the combination of bringing in and hiring four additional firefighters and freeing up four currently employed firefighters, one on the shift, from having to dispatch, that's something we can do by going to regional dispatch. That does allow us to make changes to the way we operate the callback system and it will result in, in the savings. Very difficult to calculate that at the moment and, and honestly, I don't think any of us are willing to say that that's going to happen even in the next fiscal year because it, it won't. But as we look into '26 and '27, we may be able to materialize that. But that is, that's definitely accurate. There is an ability to, to generate some savings.
So, yeah. So again, just to reiterate and hop on it a little bit more on this firefighter situation here. We haven't had an increase in manpower and personnel, let's put it that way, in the fire department. 50 years, 60 years, we've been operating with the same number of people. So when you keep in mind what it was 50 years ago, you know, we had 95% of the firefighting force that lived in town, so that when the whistle went off or the ambulance went out, the response time was immediate. You know, we probably now have close to 85 or 90% of the personnel that don't live in town and can't respond on a timely basis based upon our needs. And this is where the concern that the chief has raised over the last several years is that our personnel's inability to respond to our needs and the growing number of calls that we have, particularly for the ambulance, is substantial. And the only way that we can meet our responsibility of public safety, which is probably our primary responsibility here, is to hire our way out of it so that we can get some timely response, particularly for ambulance calls, on a recall basis. So that's why this is a priority for the, for this board, to put these four new positions in the budget. We say it's for level funding, but it is. It's for level funding to be able to staff the response time appropriately for what we're used to and make sure that it's at a safe level, rather than having to rely on, you know, mutual aid from a different community to call their ambulance in or their fire apparatus in, which takes more time. We're in that critical situation right now. So unfortunately, we have to, a budget for these four positions, which has a significant impact on our ability to raise the funds with impromptu and a half, to generate free cash and staff appropriately or fund appropriately overtime in these other departments. And while we get to turn back every year a little bit because we're conservative in our estimates, we use these funds to bond things. We use these funds to, for other general operating expenses that we count on it. So basically, this is a forced savings account that we've gotten the practice of doing, which was very responsible to do, that we're putting ourselves in a critical situation now of cutting back our ability to be flexible and to respond on a timely basis. And it's, you know, it's just a, a sign of the times in relation to, as the town administrator put it out, the affordability for our firefighters and public safety officials to live within a reasonable radius to respond to our needs on a timely basis. So we have to hire our way out of this situation so that we can provide an adequate level of public safety response time. And as a result, I have a concern that we're not going to be having enough money for, that generates the free cash to cover ourselves and gives us the flexibility moving forward. It's, it's a bad situation to be in. And I think, hopefully, people will become a little more attentive over the next month or so before we get to town meeting, to have a clearer understanding as to really what it is that's occurring here. While municipal government is a little bit behind the times as far as feeling the pinch if we don't get the override, you know, school departments are in a little different situation. They need it this year more than we need it this year. But next year, this just gets exponentially worse and the need for the personnel doesn't change. So, you know, we, we're just unable to maintain the current level of services within the confines of proposition two and a half and new growth, because the new growth is shrinking here, to sustain what we have. So that's why we have to go to the voters and probably look for a little bit more here to get us through whatever time period we decide, whether it's three years, five years, or whatever it's going to be. So, and, and it's not a, I, I think it's important for the public to understand, this board and previous boards have done a very good job of managing our money over the years to ensure that we have the free cash to cover certain expenses. At least we're recurring savings basically that we were counting on. And now we're cutting into those savings accounts to a point where we're getting down to zero. We have nothing to fall back on and that's a bad idea. So hopefully, people just will be a little more cognizant and focus in on it. And it's not the things that haven't been managed well. I mean, our community has done a very good job of managing it for over 20 years. Last time we asked for an override was for the school department. The municipal government did not ask for it, you know, in 2004. And that's carried us through, along with the new growth, along with the change in zoning, to allow for certain things to come into the community and impact the, the new growth numbers, which is above and beyond prop two and a half, to fund these things. But we're at the end of the line here. And we all have some very important decisions to make, not boards, but town meeting, you know, the voters, as to how do we proceed moving forward to sustain what we have? And what are we going to do? There, there's so much missing out of this proposal here as far as what we should be doing in relation to changing with the times and there's some of the positions that we need to have in order to function efficiently. They're not here. You know, we, we can't afford to put it in there. And I, we'll have a little discussion later on as to what, what the override should look like from the municipal side. And I think that's where we'll discuss some of these things. But I just hope that the public starts to pay a little closer attention and tries to understand, you know, why we're in this situation and what's being proposed, what the impact of that is. And again, all of us are available, you know, for conversation. The administration is available. People can reach out and, and talk to us at any time to get some clarification. And of course, we'll be having public meetings and doing some outreach ourselves. Not a good situation to be in. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Are we ready to move on?
Additional slide, this is, see, I didn't, I, you know.
Oh, you have another slide?
Oh, there's, there's, there's.
Oh, I thought you were done.
Yeah, I, I mean, just transitioning to the discussion about the override department.
Oh, okay, you're going to transition it.
Yeah, that, so that, that sort of was the thinking. And so the.
Here's your segue.
The finance director and I have tried to really, you know, force all of the moving parts into something that will hopefully be useful for discussion. And I guess, Lori, are you okay if I kind of turtle, be you to review what's going on here?
The really bad news is coming? Sure.
I just talked about the problems. Now you can come over to the slide.
So at the top of this slide, we've identified the fixed cost needs. And as Mr. Calaher presented in the capital plan, we have the two call work replacements that have to replace with bridges, the ladder truck and the potential for extra debt going forward, you know, as we fund additional things from the capital plan and the debt rises. So the debt on those would total about $1,250,000. You can see, we tried to pinpoint what years things would fall in initially. There would be, it wouldn't be anything that would hit 2025 because the project started in '25. Then you borrowed at the end of '25, so the first debt would hit in '26. Then currently, the $1.6 million from the capital improvement stabilization fund, what we typically do is at the beginning of June town meeting, we take our available free cash, put it in the capital improvement stabilization fund, but then we appropriate the debt service, we're pretty much transferring most of it back out. Because we are tightening, tightening everything up in the budget, pushing closer to our revenue actuals and taking out most of the excess funds that we would have in our expenditure budgets that departments would turn back, we probably will not have the free cash. So the $1.6 million has to fit within the operating budget. So if we put that back in the operating budget, then it pushes the deficits to the municipal and school departments. But we would have to fund $1.6 million from our operating. Now, I know Mr. Calaher mentioned $1.3 million, however, in, for FY '25, the debt service is actually closer to $1.6 million and it's going to hang there for a few years. So rather than putting the strain on the capital improvement stabilization, it's probably more, we should probably recommend that we fund the $1.6 million from the operating. In addition to that, the $350,000 that we typically put in, from raise and appropriate into the capital improvement stabilization, we've been funding that from free cash over the years. Again, as free cash tightens up or the budgets tighten up and we don't have the free cash, the funding for the capital improvement stabilization, the snow and ice deficit and retirements have to fit within the operating budget. Then the school department has identified their needs going forward. They tried to both judge their level services budget and their strategic plan, placed it out over three years to see some of the initiatives that they weren't able to undertake this year, you know, that they might want to undertake in the upcoming years. So their total request will be about $4.2 million. And as you can see, what's important to note is a big piece of their deficit is not just their strategic plan, it's their level services. Because most of their budget is salaries and there are contractual increases, they're at a point that they can't even, you know, fund those salary increases with their, the available funds for the school department. So down at the bottom, what I've done is, so the override, if it works, to be $10 million and we had two years of the two and a half percent growth, the total over three years is about $10,506,000. We take out the fixed costs and we take out the school needs, that leaves about $2.4 million for municipal government. So that's something to keep in mind as you see the list of municipal government needs over the next three years.
Can you go back, Lori?
Yep.
So we mapped here. So just to highlight, you know, where it says total fixed and school needs, kind of dead center, dead center line on the page. You see in the first year, fiscal year 2025, before we start a conversation about the municipal needs, it's at $1.6 million. And yes, we've taken some assumptions in terms of the schools. There, there are some strategic plan needs that are above and beyond their level services that are there. They've already gone through this exercise and sort of tried to smooth out what their request would be over three years and that's what they provided us. So that's what we're working on at this point in time. But when you look at that, that, you know, the, the three years should total up to $10.506 million, when you include the growth that happens under proposition two and a half. $1.6 million of it is, you know, basically accounted for in year one. $4.8 million of it is accounted for in year two. And $1.7 million of it, of it is accounted for in year three. So what you're going to see on the next slide is a, a list of, it's a, it's a list of needs that exceeds the $2.4 million that you says, see as remaining at the bottom. The needs outpace the available revenue. You know, we kind of took, made an attempt to spread it out in a scenario over the three years consistent with the feedback we got, which is try not to hit the taxpayer in one fell swoop in a single year. It's hard in fiscal year 2026 because so much comes online as a need from borrowing standpoint and that $1.6 million transfer that we need to start funding in fiscal year 2026. So there's a lot of pressure on that middle year. So, you know, the, the target, I guess, so to speak, is no more than $2.4 million for purposes of this discussion. That's how we approached it. And we can show you how we, you know, a scenario that we put together on the next page. I just want to reiterate, when you look at that next page, you can flip the slide. When you look at that next page, some of those things, we just talked about as cuts. So they're, you know, most certainly level service and level service related items. Specifically, the stuff, the items at the top, they are under the first category. And, and as you can imagine, we tried to address many of those in the first year, fiscal year 2025. And then we look down to some of the current services that we're maintaining through other funding sources that we know we're going to have to pick up. And the big one is the substance abuse program. And we are looking at whether the timing of the opioid settlement funds might be able to allow us to fund that. Fortunately, it's not an issue till the third year, you know, so we not, you know, we don't need to come up with a solution for that one right away. But what, I think, you know, do you want to just kind of go from the top? And I don't know if it's possible to zoom in at all, I think it's just really small on that screen.
Can everybody see him?
No.
How do I do that?
How do I do that on the screen?
All right.
Good night, thank you.
Who are you? I think what I'm going to ask is if we're okay with it, we'll just have the finance director go from top to bottom just describing them. That might be the most organized way to do it.
Okay.
And then in what year and why?
Okay. So the first item is $1,031,000. And this is essentially the level services request in years '26 and '27. And essentially, I, I worked backwards from doing a $10 million override, determining the fixed cost needs and the other needs. And I basically did a 4% growth rate on the each year's budget to arrive at the next year. And kind of like backed into what the level services increase would be out of those pieces. The next item is the $341,000, which was the, what we call the free cash reductions to fit in the four firefighters. The $12,000 is the IT capital, which we really need to restore. The call training is $21,000. We would try to also restore that in 2025. The next two items, one is the grant manager. We tried to push that out to 2026. We could see this year, like our departments have done really well with securing grants. It gives us another year to see if they're, if they can sustain that and whether or not we really need that particular position. And then the public works, business manager slash project manager. Again, it gives the DPW director the chance to see if he can adjust with the current personnel that he has now that some of them have been in place, you know, they were new last year. And it gives them a little more time to see if there's any way for him to restructure and still get that work done or if we'll need that position, or at least we push that one out to 2026. The public safety director position, we did not fund that because there's a request for our assistant town administrator. So if that position is eventually approved, the public safety director position most likely would not be needed. The next two.
Mister, Mister Chairman, Madam Chair, through you. Just for the public and just to confirm, our presentation is a little bit different than the schools. But it looks like that level services increase number at 1,817,28 dollars. Did I read that right?
Uh, 131.
1,31,000, excuse me. That's to continue doing what we're doing right now. So when we tried to quantify, you know, over the multiple year period, never mind the things that we know are needs or the things that we already said that we would cut, that we don't want to have to cut. Beyond that, it's still over a million dollars over three years that we need to just sustain.
Yes, Mr. Sudo.
Does that include the four firefighters? Uh, they are factored, they are factored. Yeah, thank you. And, um, and this also, with that three years, free cash would be almost nonexistent. So if this were to go through, you know, our utilizing free cash would, for all intents and purposes, come to an end, other than maybe for small capital or certainly for major capital items. The problem is this doesn't go through. Now we've exhausted the free cash option by virtue of the cuts that we did, what we'd be doing this year. Do you follow that?
Okay, so then the next position, currently, we have an outreach position that is funded from a grant. And that, we also have the transportation funds that it's a pilot program and an additional transportation grant that go through the end of '25. So those funds will end, so we will need funding to continue that outreach position at the end of, well, into 2026, at the end of '25. And then the youth substance program has been funded through a grant. It ends in September of 2026, and we do not have another option. We've exercised the grant twice, two five-year grants. You cannot receive the grant past the 10th year. So then moving down, new initiatives that we haven't funded as of yet. The elder services has determined that the current facility really isn't enough space for them to run their daily programs, whether it be yoga or some of the different things that they're doing, even for their meals, you know, that they offer on a daily basis. So they have talked to Aldersgate about renting additional space, you know, five days a week. So this would be an additional fund. So in this year's budget, they included 6,600 dollars to fund one day. This would be so they could have five days a week, even through the summer, at Aldersgate to continue to run their programs. You know, there's more parking there, there's a commercial kitchen. It just gives them so many more alternatives to offer services for the elderly. The next item is the, you know, for substitute van drivers. That will, again, the transportation pilot lasts till the end of '25, so this would be for 2026. They are just transporting so many more people, whether it be for these programs or for medical appointments, so they really need the additional staffing to keep everything going. The tree maintenance crew is 120,000 dollars. The hope was that they would be able to get the bucket truck and be able to do a lot of tree maintenance within the Department of Public Works. So we defer this till 2027. Hopefully, they'll have the bucket truck by then, you know, fund it from the capital plan. The next item, the youth services director asked for an assistant director. She pointed out a safety issue if, you know, she's alone, she can't leave, you know, middle schoolers by themselves. If someone gets hurt or something happens with one of them. So she really advocated for an assistant. So this position, because of the safety issue, we recommend it for 2025 as part of the override. Veterans then asked to increase their administrative assistant from, for this 19 hours, to 25. Again, her, on the upstream, the paperwork in the state mandates are extensive. So the veterans director asked for additional hours for her staff. Again, just trying to spread everything out, we move that to 2026. Recreation has asked, this is the second year, that they have asked for the maintenance craftsman that is funded. A third of his hours are funded from the subsidy. They would like to request that the full amount is funded from the subsidy. They just have a number of parks that I do not bring in revenue. And if they really need the help, they only have two right now, plus the parks director, who it's hard to manage the department and do the work in the parks at the same time. So because it's the second year, we were going to put that in 2025. The next position is the assistant town administrator. Again, just for the sake of trying to spread things out, we push that to 2027. The next one is a public outreach, mostly to handle things like public, social media, you know, and communication with the community. Some ways, that seemed to be a greater need because of just how prevalent social media is and all the online activity that happens. So that was slated for 2025.
Madam Chair, through you, not just social media, but supporting hybrid meetings as well. I mean, that's like a component. I think it's more having a person who can facilitate the dialogue rather than somebody who's going to be as technically capable. If I can do it, anybody can do it, in terms of the technical end of it. But we're trying to respond to what we heard as a, is a need and issue. It's also an important, it's not trivial. It's an important bridge between a growing segment of the community that interacts on social media and the fact that that is not how we're allowed to run town government. So trying to really interface better with that is a big component of what we're trying to do there. We're, we've cobbled it together for a few years now, and during the pandemic, we've gotten better at it. But, you know, there's a lot to be desired, and it's a pretty common position that you're starting to see develop in communities as they, as they grow. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll speak just to the next one, too. You know, again, this is something that we've kind of put out on the horizon as a potential issue for discussion. It's by no means identified as a need at this point, but as we go through the transition for, to the regional 911 center, and we look at the impacts on what the staffing will be, particularly in the overnights, it might be some, it's something we felt needed to be identified, that we should be aware of as a potential need in the future. And I'm just finishing, I'll just go anyway. Employee benefits for municipal employees, again, that's just staggering out what the cost would be. It's not just the salary, but it's the health insurance and the associated required benefits that go with those. So kind of spread those out in accordance with what Florida has, how she's plugged them in by fiscal year here. And then we put a contingency in there, it's 100,000 dollars for, you know, any unforeseen departmental needs. You know, unfortunately, it totals 2.586 million dollars, which is more than the 2,240,000 that was on the slide prior. Sorry, 2,203,000. Can you go back to that slide? So I just, you know, before we kind of kick it off for, you know, what further discussion might need to take place. You know, again, we fully recognize that there's a component of this, as I've stressed, that is very real, very direct impact to what we're doing and what residents are experiencing today. There's also a component of it that's things that are, would be new and that they would be beyond what we're imagining. And like any budget, you're really, the only thing that would be fixed in terms of how this would be expended would be what you see in the 2025 column, because that's what would be a town meeting. A future fiscal year, we can have all the projections that we want, but it's going to be up to that, ultimately, that budget process and what town meeting votes in fiscal year 2026 or 2027. That can't be determined until that point in time. We're just showing some planning and a projection that's, that's there. What we think this outlay might be today could be very different a year from now, and it could be even more different. As a matter of fact, it probably will be very different in two years from now. But, you know, we try to do our best to identify what have been brought up as needs and, and plug them in in future years. My final thing is, you know, we know what we know today about what the priorities are. Any one of these things could become a much more urgent priority in a, in a future year and be needed, you know, to be funded, you know, sooner than that. Or it may need to be funded at a later point in time. We're just trying to do our best to project at this point. If we don't have the additional revenue that we're talking about here, any one of these items could still become a priority and may require a cut elsewhere in the budget in order to fund it. So, you know, as I said at the, at the meeting on April 10th, for those who were watching, you know, both the superintendent and I, you know, we have to be careful about, you know, what our role is in this type of discussion. We do have a bit of latitude because we work directly for elected boards. I'm here showing you what the scenarios would be. Ultimately, it's a choice, you know, initially for the select board in terms of the warrant and, you know, potential override election. But it's a choice for the town at town meeting and in a ballot vote around the same time. Do you have anything else you wanted to add? Thank you, Lloyd, that was well explained.
Yeah, other than that, it's just the recap that shows how the result after the three years with the 10 million dollar override. So essentially, it grows to 10,506. The fixed costs of the 3,850,000, it leaves 600, 600, 6 million, 656,000. If you did the typical town and municipal share, the 66.89 is the school share of what's left over after fixed costs is subtracted on the regular operating budget. And the school share, I mean, the municipal share is 33.11%. So applying those, that's how it would come out, is the 4.4 for the school and 2.2 for the municipal. The way, the request that the school has shown us right now, what they think they'll likely to need, both level services and strategic for the next couple of years. Their request came out to about 4.2 million. The municipal side came out over. So the net deficit after the three years is 163,000. But obviously, there was a lot that we showed that is, you know, flexible depending on what we do moving forward, what positions are approved and what other funding sources we might find going forward. But this is how a 10 million dollar override could be distributed.
So, yeah, you know, these 10 million dollars, I know there's a big chunk of money and it's, nobody wants to hear it. The financial planning team felt that putting it over three years brings it to that 10 million so that we don't have to keep coming back every year to ask, which a lot of towns do. Every year, they're asking for an override. So we're trying to stretch it out three years and not have to be coming back to keep asking. Thoughts, questions, comments from the board? Mr. May, coming?
Yeah, I know there was a lot of thought put into this. I mean, it's still reading as a deficit here, but I also think that some of the things that I saw in the school department presentation, just like I see here on this slide that was previous to this, is, is asks here. You know, when you say needs not yet funded, a lot of those are not, we could eliminate a lot of those. Just like on some of the things that were in, in the school department, needs not yet funded or that they were attempting to, to have funding could come out of this. So I understand what you're saying, but it looks like the presumption is here's the split that we're going to do between the school and the town. And that, to me, is just because our, I don't want to say wish list, but our new initiatives list, we were markedly, markedly more reserved in that than, than they were in theirs. And I, I don't, I don't know if there's more work to be had, sort of honing these new initiative lists, because a lot of these that I see here simply, to me, should, should just come off the table. That's just my one out of five opinion here, but some of these are wishes, not necessarily level services needs. Just like some of the school department is wishes, not necessarily level services needs. It's just my thing is this data is coming to me. I've been to the meetings, I went to a couple of meetings that have been had so far. That's just my thought on it. But I'm not negating all the work that's been done, because I know there's a massive amount of thought put into this.
Yes, Mr. V.
You're, you're reminding me of a bit of something I kept saying I wanted to end with, and I didn't. Which is, you know, this is our best iteration of it. If the information you're seeing in one area or another is not convincing, it's not something that you feel needs to be advanced right now, even though it might need to be advanced in the future. I think we would, you know, and I'll speak for Mr. Sudo and Mr. Gonzalez, too. We would welcome that feedback so that we can review it with the financial planning team. Because, you know, for some people, some of what's on the lists is the difference between being okay with it and not being okay with it. I would hope that pretty much everybody is okay with what's on the top third of the page there, because those are things we've been talking about in budget years, year in and year out, particularly the million dollars that we need to keep doing what we're doing. But I think we would certainly welcome, you know, as people are, again, like I said, processing and reviewing things that are coming up, you know, providing us that feedback, we can certainly carry it back to the financial planning team. The three of us can, four of us can.
Well, if you vote back. It's just, if you vote.
Oh, no, you can vote.
If, if you go back to that slide that you showed the breakout, you know, for that 10 million, again, there's a built-in presumption of these, this is where these are going to go. And I think I understand the importance of justifying the request for such a significant amount. I certainly understand that. But like I said, we've been markedly reserved in our wish list requests. And I think that's the areas I think people want to see more of, those, those lines from the school. I think people want to delve more into the budget. I think you said 88% of the budget is personnel costs. Right, did you say that?
I think it was 80%.
Eighty-seven?
No, eighty, it's just a little over eighty, I think, over there. Eighty, eighty percent.
Just over eighty. So that's a pretty significant piece of this. How are we going to manage that down the line? This is only for a three-year period of time. A new contract comes up with more, you know, more, are we going to have to come back at that point? You know, for another override to cover personnel costs? I think that's a big concern here as well.
Madam Chair, through you then. I think that's a great point. You know, we really, in financial planning, we're trying to identify something that would carry, that we felt would carry us through multiple fiscal years. The, the reason is because the very model that we're built on with the restriction of the two and a half percent for our major revenue. the two and a half percent for our major revenue driver is not sustainable really for any period of time. I mean, for anything that we add, to be candid, I think we all know this, we add it in, ultimately it becomes unsustainable because the number that gets can carry forward is two and a half and the reality of how our expenses grow is more like four. And our fixed cost is more like five percent. And so we've shown the red and green chart 100 times. I know you've all seen, you know, what that that looks like. But that, you know, certainly is part of the challenge, you know, for us. I think we didn't want to go the other way and just ask for the number to solve this year's deficit because we felt people would say, okay, we're back having a problem the next year. So it could be that what we're collectively comfortable with is somewhere in the middle. You know, it's not one year, but it's not an attempt at three years and a lengthy list of requests, too, right? You know, and that's the feedback we're looking for.
Thank you. Chair, welcome.
Can we go to the, back to the, yeah. So I think a lot of it too on here, on our side, I can't speak to the school one and the line items, but some of these are, a couple are quality of life, right? I mean, the, I know how much good happens when there's space to do different things for other services. I know that all the activities which you just, you need room to do. And, and some of them are, I mean, we need them. And I think I see your point, Mr. Smith, that those aren't, it's not the level, but the thing is that this, to me, the lower is the municipal version of capital, of things that keep getting kicked down the road, but not necessarily because we don't need them or they could be better for the town, but because we don't have the money. But eventually, you have to, you have to make a decision. And again, I, I'll go back to this and I said it about pretty much everything we ever debated. If we think these are, not to pick on anything, but if we think these are good things, but we just can't afford them, town meeting should decide them. Like I've been a pretty big proponent that, you know, those are a big number. I mean, I can't tally them in my head that, that quick. We're getting kind of late here, but it should be town meeting that decides whether or not we should fund any of this or just the town or just the whole thing. So I don't think that any board has the right, now, I'm not saying we're trying to do this, but just like with certain capital items that are important, just like with the firefighters, just like with the school mix, but you go to town meeting and if the voters decide that these new initiatives that are not level but are worthwhile, if they want to vote for them, I, I think they should have the opportunity to do it.
Oh, I'm not saying that they shouldn't.
No, but that.
I'm, I'm saying something totally different, Mr. Sudo. And I actually.
Maybe I missed it then.
I actually even think that this big ask, not only should we be really restrictive in how it's used, but so should the school. I mean, this is a big thing to ask for a huge override, knowing the other things coming down the road here. And so I think we shouldn't just be saying, and, you know, this is what we think we're going to use it for because we need these new initiatives, because we don't. We put a public, public services director in to write for grants to, for some of these things. And, and she's been successful at doing this. A lot of elder services in a lot of communities is funded by grants. So I could see the need for not a grant manager, but a grant writer that we've talked about year after year after year. But we've taken the steps, the town's taken the steps to, to fund that certain positions that help out with some of these initiatives, new initiatives. And tree maintenance, we have a vendor, we talk about this all the time. It's cheaper to have an outside vendor doing that type of thing. It rather than adding a crew on that down the line is going to multiply our costs. Yes, we would love to have an in-house crew. That means we have to have the in-house equipment. So it's, it has to be, and I know that the work was done here, but I have to, I do want to be the devil's advocate here because these are the things that I'm thinking of, not just as a select board member, but as a, a person's going to vote on the town meeting floor, a person in the community. And I know other people are thinking about these same things, you know, free kindergarten. I understand that's a strategic initiative of the school department. But when we're supposed to be behind asking the community to support a $10 million override, that's a wish list item that's got to come off the table because that's going to be something down the line that's going to just be further cost. Now, I know Dr. Daly said they've been working on trying to fund that, but some of these things, I think, projecting forward, we're, we're probably going to be at a deficit rather quickly if we're, let's say, funding a whole new crew. That means more equipment, that means more capital cost, that means more employee benefits costs and things like that. So that's my point. I'm not, I'm absolutely not saying as one member of this board, I actually am going to support putting this on the town meeting floor because it's too, it, it, we don't, we don't decide, like Mr. O'Larry said earlier, we don't decide this. The whole town decides it, or at least the town voters decide it, not five people. But it's too important, knowing what we've known for the years that we've been working these budgets and fixing and balancing and finding things. Luckily, we've been finding ways to do this. It's too important for us now not to say we're at a financial crossroads, everyone has to come in and make a vote on this. I'm totally, I totally agree with that, and that's not what I'm saying.
And also, I think where this came from was that there was some comment when we did the joint meeting that just to show the public that the school had a very specific, like what their new initiatives would be, and we really didn't. So this was more also to show that just because we hadn't shown our cards at that meeting didn't mean, because I, I think the narrative was shaping that somehow we were perfect over here with our budget and the schools weren't. That was a narrative that was forming that like, oh, on the muni side, they got everything figured out. How come you guys can't be more like them? And it's like, well, let us show you what we need too. We just have been, to your point, more reserved. So, and, and I'm not saying.
But defer, like you said, we have deferred needs, needs. The top part is needs. We defer, and I totally understand that.
So, so that's, yeah, that's, oh, and that.
But we have to think of it in those terms, Madam Chair. That's what I think collectively as a board, we can certainly collectively get behind understanding why, because we've been looking at these and trying to sort these budgets and never comes out perfectly. Every year, the financial planning team is meeting every month. Sometimes you've been meeting.
We've been meeting every week.
So, and the, the benefit of having both the school committee and the select board members together and everyone else, the benefit is of that is we know and we know the need and we've been always been able to manage it, but it's now become to a situation where it's not manageable. 100%, Mr. Sudo, that, that everybody needs to have, you know, an opportunity to vote. Where's the direction going here? And if the direction is going, no override, full disclosure, eyes wide open, that means a lot of cuts.
Right.
Not just this year, but down the line. The difference, it's going to be a major difference in present services that are being provided.
Mr. Willner?
So, so two things. I'm glad to see that we're maintaining the 66% 33% relationship. And I assume that whether it's level services or whether it's this, which is the two thirds, that we're maintaining that as a governing, that's kind of the standard we've created. Is that correct? We're trying to maintain that?
Yes, and part of it happens because, so for 24, 25, that's what the ratio was. And then we just kind of applied a 4%, you know, to our level services and they kind of did the same thing. So it naturally maintained that ratio, but then we did the comparison to, you know, if we actually applied those percents to the $10,506,000, like where would it come out? It was just kind of like a comparison that we felt was kind of important to me.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's important to maintain that relationship. So if, if it goes down, let's say it's not 10 million, it's eight million or whatever you call it, both sides should still come out to be 33 and 66% however that breaks down. And then when I look at this, I mean, I don't know how you would, are you suggesting that we go line by line and people vote on whether or not we, we fund it or are we recommending a package? Because I actually look at these new initiatives and these not yet funded, but I could easily justify half of those why they're strategically important for us, if not more.
No, I, I.
So, I mean, I don't think we're suggesting line by line. I think it's a package and you put the package in, they draw the package.
No, it would be a package between level and new. Not line item. I don't know how that would work, but.
What do you mean level and new? Did you, what third, two thirds, you're talking about?
Up there, up there, we're sure. I'm just saying that the things we deem very important that we hear about, because a lot of those are rich, I mean, I, I, we've heard it of some of those and they can be justified. So those just get lumped in and then I don't know, I don't know what the mechanism is or if anybody, I've never seen it on town floor, I mean, I haven't been here long enough of where somebody could say, well, amend, it's a strike. Is that actually, is there a mechanism for that on the meeting floor?
Mr. Delver?
So, so you, Madam Chair, so the way this would be presented at town meeting would be, you're going to see a balanced budget number, which is going to highly likely, I think, to reflect the cuts you saw earlier. So that would be the budget. And then there would be another line next to it with additional funding for fiscal year 2025 only, because we can only appropriate for the upcoming year's budget at the June town meeting. And if we were to go with this proposal, you would see the additional amounts in the 2025 column in that second program, that second column. And it would be contingent on a proposition two and a half ballot vote being approved by the town. So somebody could then on the town meeting floor amend that. They could say, well, I want to cut something in that proposition two and a half column, right? Town meeting has the ability to do that, it would get debated, there would be a vote. They could add something else into it. I mean, any number of things could be done and that includes with the school department's budget as well. But ultimately, the budget gets passed. If there's any contingency for two and a half, you know, it doesn't all get eliminated, I mean, which also will happen, you know, that will be the, the amount that would be pending for fiscal year 2025. A separate vote is the actual override question.
Okay.
Which would be the $10 million. But it would not all be spent in the first year, it would be staggered as you're looking at it here.
Right.
So I, the question that will go to the town on the $10 million at the ballot, that is, that, that $10 million is spread over multiple years here.
Yeah.
But if only, you know, only some of it's going to be recommended to be appropriated at town meeting in June for fiscal year 25. Whether that number changes or not, it's going to be 10 million because the ballot's already going to have been signed by the select board determining the amount. And that, by the way, that remains true in the fiscal, the future years. The town meeting doesn't like what happened in the first year.
Yeah.
And the ballot vote was, had been approved, they don't need to appropriate that money. It could still, we could still lower what's appropriated at town meeting back to within the old tax limit. I mean, those are all, that's a great thing about our form of government. That decision gets, gets to be made every spring at town meeting.
Okay, so I would, I would suggest then, so this isn't so overwhelming, the needs list, is that you actually reorder it so that the ones that are coming in 2025 go to the top if those are the highest priorities. And then the second set is this set and the last set is over here. So that way they can see how it builds and it's not like we're doing it all at once. Because right now, if I look at this, it's just kind of overwhelming, but if the priority is, you know, whatever we've indicated here is a priority, like for example, elder services, which I think is a high priority, you know, it would make sense that that would appear in 2025. And anything that's in 25 should be right next to each other, right? So that way you can absorb it a little bit easier and can understand it a little bit better by priority. It would help us, it would help us to prioritize it as well.
And then also on that thing, especially with, it would lower the, you know, you have that 341,000 for store reductions and impact, I mean, that level service increase then wouldn't be in the same, you're talking about, because that's for 2026, but here it appears like it's all, like right away. So that's a big.
Kind of just make it easier for, I mean, over three years, you can handle the impact. If you look at it all at once, it's kind of like, oh, jeez, you know, it's way too much.
And that's something that was this.
Well, I would be voting for columns around them. That's what, that's what I.
Useable columns?
Yeah, usable columns.
Because then they also know that year after year, they can, you know, they, this is first year, we're saying, right?
Right.
And they know next year, this is what we think it's going to be, but they're going to have, they know in next year, they're going to have a, a vote on that to see what that looks like, you know, as opposed to, again, it just looks like a mash of information here, which is hard to absorb.
Right, for town meeting voting purposes, columns 26 and 27 will exist, meaning the two.
Oh, you're just going to eliminate those entirely?
You can't, for voting, for presentation purposes, we can.
But are you going to, are you going to be showing them, are you going to be projecting out to show them the entire?
Well, I think the town is expecting us to.
Okay, so.
When it comes to the actual vote.
I get it, I get it. But I'm saying on the project, you're going to lose them at this, you're going to lose them at this slide.
Yeah, we can reorder it so that they're all stacked by year. I think that will help.
Yeah, I think that'll help, make it clear. But then when they go to vote, it's only on.
It'll only be on column 26.
Those particular things, yeah.
And the school department same time.
And if there are specific, and if there are specific areas that people have concerns about that they're not necessarily in support, they'll know which year it's going to be in.
Yeah.
And where they can make their amendment on town meeting floor to add to or eliminate.
Yeah.
But the other.
Simplify it a little bit.
Yeah, the other important thing though is that from the municipal side, it's, it's pretty much laid out like this line item by line item. On the school department budget, it's a bottom line appropriation. Now, they could put it in there, this is their projected budget, how they anticipate to be spending their money, but once they, we appropriate the dollar amount for the school department, it's a bottom line budget and they're able to, they have the flexibility to move it around and adjust, which we don't. Hours gets, hours meeting, the general government side gets appropriated basically line item by line item, where the school department is a bottom line. They can tell us what initiatives are in there and what the level services are and how many teachers are going to be and all that sort of stuff. But they have that flexibility, which is important for them to operate.
Right.
And that's how it's appropriated. So it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
As far as town meeting's ability to cherry pick, you know, if this is a, an interesting situation where you're almost getting into budgeting by referendum and it's, could be nightmarish.
Yeah. Yes. But if, if the bulk of this is, is going to school department so that they can fund new initiatives, that better be set out and that better hap, that better happen with the funding. So I get what you're saying.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I begin.
But I thought this was just an explanation of why the override was needed, not just for the level services, to correct the deficit on level services, but level services doesn't mean the expenses didn't grow. They did grow. But if it's because of new initiatives that they're working towards, just like our new initiatives, you know, we, we, the money needs to go towards that.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
Yeah, we need to see that conversation.
From the municipal side.
Otherwise, no one's going to vote for an override.
It will happen, or we won't spend the money, you know. On the school department side, they have far more flexibility to adjust to whether there's special needs cases that come into town and they have to.
No, I understand.
Those sorts of things. So, so they have that flexibility where it's a bottom line budget number that's appropriate.
No, I understand.
Where we are department by department, or however we presented at town meeting and then we're, we're stuck with it. So that.
But we should see that, just like Mr. Walmart said.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I, I believe.
You should see that from the school, just like they did in the meeting.
They should look similar.
No, I think the school department did a very good job.
To absorb it.
I thought they did a very good job at that last meeting we were at, as far as laying it out, you know, what's level services, what does level services mean because of change in enrollment and all the rest? It doesn't mean the same number of teachers, it means things fluctuate. I think they've done a very good job of laying it out and also including their initiatives, the new initiatives in the budgets going forward. Because, you know, they, what they're saying to the public is, you know, we have certain things that we need to do and want to do, you know, to make things better for our schoolchildren and educational process here in our threading, and this is included in here, you know, as it would be if we didn't have these issues with proposition two and a half, this is what we would be proposing. To your point that you made earlier, you know, we have been very cautious and careful as far as incorporating new initiatives. very cautious and careful as far as incorporating new initiatives based upon the budgetary constraints that we've been living in already, and maybe to our own detriment at that point. Because these are things that we should be doing, probably should have done previously, and have been holding off on. And we need to carry them forward, just let the public know this is what we're gonna be doing, and why. You know, it is. I still think it's incumbent upon us as a board to present a budget to the public, and I know we'll get there eventually. That's what we believe is in the best interest of the community, to move us forward in the most efficient way of spending the taxpayers' money. And some of those may include the new initiatives, and we need to justify that. And the town meeting will ultimately make the decision along with the people at the ballot box. But I think, if we can, you know, we should be somewhat united here in what we're presenting and why we're presenting it, and not say, okay, now here is, this is what we think we should be doing, now go ahead and cherry pick. Because cherry picking may not fit into the whole scheme of ideas that we've put, we've put together here as far as showing some initiative and how we should be moving forward as a community. So, I think we need to be cautious as to how it's presented. And again, it doesn't prevent anybody at town meeting making amendments and all the rest, but
All right. All right.
Are there more slides or no?
The only, the only question I have here is, where in all of this, does free cash fit in, and the ability to generate some free cash? Or does it? Does it not?
Restore reductions that impact free cash generator. That's your main
Just right there.
Other than your revenues, yeah.
And you're also, Madam Chair, we're not relying on that to fund the budget year after year either. So, that $1.6 million that we're transferring in free cash to offset that service, that, in this scenario, has gone away. So, you, you, we're benefiting, we're not, we're not necessarily having to rely on it each year to sustain services, and we're not, and we're still continuing to generate it to a smaller degree, we're still generating it.
Yeah, because I think that's critical, because once we get beyond this three-year stage and getting into the fourth year, you know, where we may or may not generate some support from the community to move forward, we still have all these obligations to meet, and we need some flexibility, and we need savings accounts to rely upon to just pay your bills. So, I, I just wanna make sure, again, that we're not leaving ourselves short in, in budgeting to the absolute dollar without recognizing we need to put some money into savings for a rainy day type thing, and not just to meet the, the needs of the community and services we provide, but also for bond rating purposes, which the cost of borrowing has a significant impact on our debt service, which impacts dollars and miles that are available for police, fire, public health, teachers, and everybody else, so.
And what I heard was three to five percent of our budget should be free cash.
Again, scary news.
Three to five percent.
Is, is what we should be generating every year?
Should be free cash to preserve our bond rating.
All right.
So, it should be in there, you know.
We don't have any motion or anything like that?
No, but our next meeting in two weeks, May 6th, would be when we would ordinarily be finalizing the budget, signing the warrant, and then, with that Friday, we would send it to the printer. So, absent any other direction, what we would be bringing back to you at that meeting would be, for fiscal year 2025, contingent, that column that says 2025. And in terms of the reductions in the level, in the non-override budget, that earlier slide showed the cuts. So, you know, we're, again, we've, we recognize this is new, the, the long list isn't new, the sort of prioritizing is. And I'm not saying that we need to necessarily go through and make a bunch of changes to it this evening. This is just our, our thoughts based on everything that we know about, about the budget, and trying to the extent that we can spread things out. And again, I just, I can't stress enough, the, the total identified list there exceeds what's available in the override. It's two point, almost $2.6 million. We only got $2.2 million to work with in this scenario. So, as you get into year two and three, you don't necessarily even get to everything that's on there.
Right.
I'll also, if I just may, and again, I'll suggest that when it comes down to presenting it to the public, the override portion, is that we distill it down to an average house so they can see, you know, what there would be with the 2.5% of what would be with the override to their property tax. So, they can absorb that. Because these numbers are just staggering, you know. But if you put it down to someone's individual home, they can make that decision whether that $600 a year is worth it to them or not. And hopefully, it's, on average. So, we need to distill it down to that so they can see that.
Absolutely, very great.
Yeah.
And that, that's how they'll be voting it, too. They're gonna be voting, your taxes, I mean, we've had the conversation, people say they want their taxes to go up, the taxes go up every year. We know that, they're doing that, they go up.
Right.
Here, they go up even more, because so much of the growth is in the residential valuation. But the way it will be presented will be just in that fashion. That second column, that they'll be appropriating will in fact be above and beyond that tax increase. But I think that's a great feedback.
Great, thank you.
All right, so, everybody comfortable with their recommendations?
Yeah, a lot of work, good job. Yeah, good job, guys.
All right, thank you.
Hard stuff.
I think, I'm not trying to put a lot of the conversation, but I think I, I think I heard,
Yeah.
go back to the Friday explanatory team, stay in the course, is what I think I'm hearing.
Stay in the course, make it more, you know, to, to Mr. Walner, that, with the columns, make it a little more clear each year of what's happening, correct? And Mrs. Minipelli, I think we wanted to maybe adjust some things that maybe we didn't move without.
Okay, not, not do that, but I'm, I'm gonna piggyback off of Mr. O'Leary, said maybe, maybe somehow put the detail in there of how, you know, we're gonna be able to maintain and not save necessarily, but store enough to be able to cover. There has to be something to show that or project that, if we're getting this override, how is that And I think, I think Laurie, you did a graph, that red and green graph, right? Something like that, I think, could be important to, to, to display it. How we're gonna be able to manage the budget moving forward with, with the override.
One of the other things that
There's a graph in there.
But one of the things that we can anticipate questions on, which we brought up a little bit earlier, is the revenue that's being generated through interest on, say, the Pulte money, which is the biggest savings account we have right now. You know, people, first of all, you know, but why can't we spend some of that money? First of all, it's one-time money, we're not gonna use it for, we're not gonna advise town meeting to use any of that money for one-time costing, you know, one-time money funds to, to fund the general operating budget, it's, it's not a good idea. And two, if we're generating $70,000 a month, you know, in revenue, how does that fit in here? And can the $10 million be reduced a bit to recognize that? Again, the discussion is gonna be, how long is, are the rates gonna be maintained in, whatever we're getting, five, five percent, or whatever it's gonna be. We can't count on that. But, you know, how is that factored in here from a revenue stream? Where does it show from a revenue stream, this additional revenue from interest income moving across? Because people are gonna, people are gonna ask the question.
Yeah, no, I think that, yeah.
And we just had, I think we need to address it upfront.
Right.
You know, those types of issues, we know what the questions are gonna be asked, because we have some of the same questions ourselves. We've been publicly or privately, we've asked it. I think it needs to be addressed upfront. You know, in other words, we know what the concerns are, we know what the arguments are going to be. Yeah, well, let's address it right upfront, answer those questions. You know, people can agree or disagree with it, but at least answer the questions, recognize the questions that are gonna be asked. And what is revenue sources, where's it coming from, how much is there? We've got, interest rates are high, so our borrowing costs are higher, but our income is higher. How does that factor in here?
Right.
And, you know, you know, why 10 instead of nine and a half, you know, or whatever, nine and a half million. So, I just think, we need to address it upfront.
Agreed. Same thing with the, with, with regard to Pulte, though, I think it's restricted, we should have something that explains that. But also, I got a question of, why can't we just use the proceeds from the Hillview, what's generated from the Hillview? So, it's kind of a similar question that, you know, we should answer, it's an enterprise fund that covers its own expenses, so there's nothing generating there that we can, as a town, pull out to pay operating expenses.
No, and again, maybe the town meeting has the ability to do that, but is it, we've never advised town meeting to do that, because it's unwise, because the enterprise itself needs to sustain itself first, so to continue to, to generate income to support other, other initiatives.
Plus, some of this is going to paying down some of the debt service on the field.
Yep.
And a lot of that, to that point, I mean, the bond indebtedness is, is dropping significantly, and will be going away shortly. But the needs at the Hillview, and particularly the function hall facility, are in the millions. You've got $2 million just for a roof. The question is, do we really wanna put $2 million into the roof on that building there? Or should we be talking about something else that the enterprise can support to maintain the goose is laying the golden egg here? Because once you start getting into that enterprise account, and start diverting it for general operating expenses, you're gonna kill it.
Right.
You know, there isn't, the margin isn't that great. It's done wonderful things for us over the years, because we've been prudent with it. And, you know, Rita can tell you, UC has gone to, to the Hillview Commission over the years for, with a number of initiatives, where they just said, great idea, wonderful thing, but we can't afford to do that right now, no. You know, and the commission's been very good as far as making sure that they have enough debts, you know, revenue to cover their debt service and take on some initiatives periodically, not on an ongoing basis, because they don't want
People here understand that, but I think it needs to be explained to some, the Pulte restrict, Pulte fund restriction. I think people don't have a good sense of why, and I think we need to ask one either. That's what I'm saying.
But yeah, right up front, I think it's good, I think the town manager didn't even tell you, these are our sources of revenue.
Yes.
This is what they can be used for, you know, this is what has been presented previously as to why we're doing it the way we're doing it, what it's doing for us now, and why you don't just put it into your general operating budget and then see it disappear. You want it to continue to work for you, so.
All right, so, Mr. Gilbert, are you comfortable with your feedback?
Yeah, I mean, reach out to folks for some clarification of the last month's conversation, but I think I got it, yeah. Generally is, generally is.
Okay.
Laurie, and you, then we got it.
Yeah, my only question is on this, when you want it grouped by year, do you still want me to identify what is a new initiative and that type of thing?
I think we just make a column and put it in it, that way we can just stagger it all by year.
Just reorder it, yeah.
I think we can address it just by having a column that says it in the explanation.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think it's a good idea, just bunch them together by year in the column, and then at least the first column will be
Yeah, this is what it is.
Yeah, straight up and down. The other ones, we stagger it as you stagger the class out.
All right, we're all fading, so let's move on. I think we're ready.
It's only a little after eleven.
So
And I'm not in the budget.
Let's get on to the review, the updated warrant for June 10th, 2024, spring annual town meeting. I, I believe that the town clerk is of O'Shea. Was she waiting for us to discuss the, the special town meeting dates?
It was a special election.
For you or no? Because I, I wanted to do it sooner than later.
No, I didn't know, I was just scared if there was any questions on dates for a special election.
Special election.
Yeah, that's what I
Why do we have a special election?
For the override.
For the override. We'll have to do a ballot. So, I just don't wanna, I didn't wanna make you hang. I know.
I thought you were just interested in what we were telling.
No, so
Isn't that why everybody's
It's a, it's a good way to conclude the last budget item, which was about the budget.
Yeah.
So, the, the discussion that we've been having, the town clerk and I, is about a potential, you know, the second part of the vote, or the town meeting vote is a ballot election, that would be held at St. Teresa's that we've already discussed, we would be recommending early voting for. Based on all of that, I think what we've talked about is an election day being Tuesday, June 18th, which is a week and a day after the Monday, June 10th town meeting. By doing that, your early voting would be the five days, the week before, the week of June 10th, so 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th would be early voting. Is that right? And your Saturday voting would be Saturday, June 8th. So, the voting, early voting would actually open two days before the town meeting, and would be ongoing, not at the same exact time, like, I doubt we would do the night voting the same night as town meeting, probably would pick another, another evening. But these things would sort of be happening concurrently, with the election day being Tuesday, June 18th. That also happens to be the last day North Reading Public Schools are scheduled to be in session. Tuesday, the 18th, I think. I think Wednesday is the Juneteenth holiday, if they would, who would do the Juneteenth, it would be Thursday. And I think it's still the 18th. So Anyway, I, I, I should know.
Somebody in my house knows.
So, can we just clarify for everybody what, how exactly that's working? So, if the override is voted, or if it isn't, and that next step, and why?
So, so the, conceptually, what happens here, we had a call, call with town council, well, this is well, Laurie, you can certainly correct me if I'm misstating, town council, but the timing is such that we're, so, I guess I should
You want a budget July first, first of all.
You want to have a budget July first, that's right. Now, the Department of Revenue will let you delay an override ballot vote to as late as September 50th. But I don't think, particularly the public schools, are gonna find that to be palatable. We haven't talked with them about that time, but I think the more, the earlier they know their budget, because of a significant level services gap, the better. We could talk more in financial planning team about that scenario, but I, I just, I'm not sure that's gonna work for their purposes. So, you know, what would be happening is, early voting would begin in person on Saturday, June 8th. They would, it could be Saturday, and Sunday could just be Saturday, but we traditionally just do Saturday. Then, there would be early voting, the hours of town hall being open Monday through Friday, here in town hall, most likely in the gym, right? And there would probably be two evenings that would not be Monday, June 10th, because that's the night of town meeting. Right? So, early voting Monday in the, in the town hall till four o'clock, then an evening town meeting at seven o'clock in the gym at the high school. And Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, early voting in the town hall. And two evenings that we, that have yet to be determined, we would do early voting as well, but they would not be Monday, because we're gonna want everyone to go to town meeting.
So, just to clarify, even if town meeting votes against
So, sorry, sorry, I missed your question. Based on the timing, we have to give the town clerk 35 days notice, we're gonna be asking you to make a decision on the election day, the same night you approve the warrant for town meeting, which will be Monday, May 6th, which means the election will already be scheduled. Whether or not it's approved at town meeting, the election gets held, in either scenario at that point. If it fails, we still have a, a vote, and it could prevail. And yes, a subsequent town meeting could opt to actually reconsider and appropriate the funding, should it be approved at, at the ballot. So, I know we talked about with the wastewater project, that we would wait to call the ballot vote till after the town meeting. But that's not, that timing isn't gonna work in this scenario here. So, yes, and, and there's no way to cancel the election. I mean, I even asked, could you go to the judge and ask for court order? And council, that, town council says, town council said, no, you can't, it has to be held. If town meeting did not appropriate the funding, and it passed at the ballot vote, the override passed, it would still need to go back to town meeting for appropriation, but that could happen, so.
And vice versa, if it passes at town meeting, but it fails at the ballot?
It's dead.
Um, I think it's dead at that point.
It's dead.
I think you need to have, because your contingent appropriation didn't get appropriated.
Right, it's dead.
So, only the other way does
Yeah, I mean, you could have another, another town meeting to authorize it, and then have a ballot vote. But to be very clear, there's, once the election is called, and based on the timing, it will likely have to be called at the same time as the town meeting warrant being signed, there's no provision to cancel it.
So, we have to make that very clear at town meeting, because people are gonna be, if it fails, people are gonna be saying, they're not gonna be understanding why that's happening.
I, I have a question, though, you know, and again, maybe it's another, just a week's timing here. Why would we Why would we have voting on the override before all the discussion has taken place and decisions are made at town meeting? In other words, it provides people with an opportunity to come to town meeting and make up their mind what they want to do. Again, some people, none of their minds made up anyway, you know, either for or against it, but, you know, why can't we, why can't you put it on a week?
So we could. I think we were really becoming concerned about going far into the end of June and people's ability to participate in the election. That's where we came up at the 18th.
So it's half a one, because, so if we eliminate early voting, we eliminate that problem.
For this happen. Or you could delay the election day.
That's what I'm saying, delaying the election day until after town meeting. In other words, the discussion, the public discussion and voting at town meeting will have taken place and then, you know, because right now what's being proposed is simultaneously having early voting before we've even discussed it in town meeting is made a decision.
But what I'm saying is, if you don't have early voting, you have town meeting and then you have a vote. You're not having people vote before.
No, but you also have, you're coinciding with the end of the school year, people going away on vacation, people leaving town.
Yeah, but you don't have to go further in if you still have the election this, on June.
I mean, the thing is, Mr. Oliver, I agree with you there, but I feel like if we're not gonna do it that week, I think then you've gotta bump it to like late July. Because for like, for that last week of June and the first like two, three weeks of July, I mean, like it, I mean.
And nobody's gonna be around.
We look like a North Reading population 1965 again. There's no one around.
Yeah, but you have to have it before July 1st.
I mean, I just don't know that.
Yeah, we want to have it before July 1st.
But I mean, if you go out a week, I feel like at that point, you're, there's a lot of people gone.
What's the date you were talking about?
June 18th.
June 18th, but if you push it even a week, like, I mean, like, again, maybe just because like, but.
So we're the June 25th.
So town meeting's June 10th.
Yes.
So you don't do the early, the scenario, you don't do the early voting, you have town meeting, and then you have the election on the 18th.
That's also a possibility.
Now, nobody's voting before they know.
No, I'm not, no, I'm in favor of having.
I know you're not gonna be a proponent of that, but.
No, no, I'm in favor of having the early voting, but, you know, to me, you still have calendar time to ensure that the people who are gonna be going away after the 18th of June or the 20th of June still have the opportunity for early voting prior to their leaving town or can get an absentee ballot.
Well, an absentee ballot.
But that'd be, town meeting will have already taken place, taken their vote, you know, and by the way, I'm gonna be, because my son's getting married the 17th of June, so, which is good, you know, it's a good thing, but again, I'm gonna have to vote early or absentee or something, but.
So an absentee ballot is a?
No, but I'm just saying.
You don't have to have that timeline of people.
Not everybody just leaves town, you know, the two days after school closes either, but all I'm saying is, you know, allow for as much public discussion.
Right.
And back and forth over it, and have town meeting make, come to a conclusion before people are voting.
I agree, I don't think people should be voting before we have all that information.
But you don't eliminate early voting because of that, what you do is just push it up.
I mean, why don't you stick to this plan? It seems like the plan is as good as it's gonna get.
It's a bit of a technicality, right?
What's that?
I mean, you're opening up voting for the special election two days, three days before you even had the discussion, right? I don't think most people will actually vote until after they've gone to town meeting. I mean, is it just really kind of a technicality, so we hit the deadline?
Based on, I mean, maybe this is gonna be a little bit more charged, but I mean, based on some of those statistics you gave us on early voting patterns, or even, you know, the most charged up elections, which could be presidential or higher up, I don't know how many.
Oh, no, override, what do we have for the schools? We, 60 plus.
My point is with the early thing is, I feel like you're gonna get, I think Mr. Buckley said it best, right, you're gonna have a financial plan, and you're gonna have a third who are gonna support it either way, you're gonna have a third who are gonna say no, you know, outside of like there being like a sinkhole in the middle of 62 to spend money, and then you're gonna have a third who, you know, so I, meaning those that vote early, I don't think are going, they were gonna, they were gonna, they already made up their minds like yesterday. Like, so, so I do agree with, I mean, but in a way, it's like the technicality, but I feel like those that would vote early for this already made up their minds like before we even set override. So, yes or no, vote, vote camps.
Yeah.
Can I just ask you a quick question again?
Chris.
Oh, so, do we, if we do early voting, you said we have to do a Saturday, and then what else do we have to do? Can we make it just shorter early voting here, so let's say if we have the town meeting on, on the 10th, and we have the election on the 18th, you could do early voting on that Saturday preceding it and the Monday before or something?
Yeah, it's generally a week, which includes a Saturday.
No, I'm saying to you, does the law require us to have it for a week?
It doesn't specify. It just says it can't be held no more than 17 days before the election, and it has to end two days before the election, is how it's specified in the law.
It has to be a Saturday, it has to be two days before.
Well, it has to end two days before.
So it ends on that Saturday, basically.
Go ahead.
I mean, if you're gonna call the election a town meeting, you know, the same night, and we have to go through the election anyways, I mean, what's the harm in having the in-person voting? It's an override, so you would have a big turnout. I mean, and probably people would wait until town meeting and then vote after. So, I mean, what's the harm in having the week in in-person voting?
I think it's fine.
What do you, what do you propose for that, or live in through the, what are you proposing for that? We need you there at the town meeting, so you can't do, you can't do early voting that Monday for sure, because you're running our town meetings.
Well, it would be during normal business hours, I mean, we would stop it at 4:00.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we would be already ready for town meeting at that point.
Okay.
So that wouldn't be an issue. The only other thing I see is if you did want to do a special election on a Saturday, I would have to check with St. Teresa's, because they do use that hall for other organizations. So that's the only thing. I mean, I can check, I can email them, see what the options are, if you're looking at Saturday.
You're talking the 22nd or the 15th, I'm confused.
Still talking the 18th.
If you want to do a 15th or 22nd, whatever, you decide.
I mean, I think the dates are fine. As first discussed.
I just need 35 days' notice, that's all. The vote isn't here.
And we don't need to necessarily decide. Tonight, but this is what we've been looking at, based on discussion with town council, looking at the calendar. I mean, you could have the election on Tuesday, June 25th, and have early voting the week before that, including the Monday and Tuesday, June 17th and 18th. I mean, I don't want to say or say that that couldn't be done. We were just trying to avoid going too late into June with the dates, that's what I'm saying.
No, I agree, I don't think there's any other options. It sounded fantastic.
And the people that ask for ballots for all elections, is this included?
Yes.
So you're gonna mail out 3,000 of these ballots also?
Yes.
You're gonna have a great turnout.
Look at the pain.
You're gonna have a great turnout.
They're going out, I don't know what's gonna come back.
Well, you'll get plenty of those back, I think.
They're applications for ballots, right? You don't mail ballots.
No, they already put in application the whole year, so automatically get a ballot.
So they get a ballot no matter what?
Regardless of, we have 10 elections this year, so they're gonna get a ballot.
Yeah?
Yep.
I don't know, I don't know what I signed up for. If you put a sign on it, it helps a little.
I don't want 10 elections, what do you reason?
Well, that's good.
All right, so should we just think about?
A little more information, just slowly.
We'll talk in financial planning terms.
Okay, all right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Thanks for being with us all.
Go to bed.
Vincenzo, see the time?
I, I.
Don't show him the clock.
I am aware that.
I was there, I was there, I was there this morning when we were here at 11:30.
We were here at, we were here at 9:00.
Mr. Gilbert.
I was here more than my office today, which is awesome, because I'm not a political municipal budget.
Thank you, I need to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, for reminding.
I'll try to go quickly, I had a version of a warrant that was in your packets, and then even today, we had some adjustments that we made, that our rule is marked up changes, it's also printed out in front of you here. Have a copy if you want to refer to, but we talked about dissolving the 102, 104 Lowell Roads revolving fund in order to make those funds available to offset the cost of the fire pump, but that's a town meeting action, so we've added it as a new, what would be Article 12 on there, and then, you know, we obviously reworked things. Article, it's now 17, which is a home rule petition relative to the senior citizen property tax exemption program. What we did at the request of Mr. Waller, I think on behalf of that committee, we took the town of Redding's program and basically put it in here as a draft home rule petition. One thing that did come up is, I think their percentages are different than what we're talking about.
Yes.
This is between 100 and 150, is ours supposed to be?
50%.
Up to 50% or is it just?
Well, up to 50%, yeah.
Okay, so I know that we sort of reviewed information that was presented, but we have it on there as a warrant article at this point, submitted by the Taxation Aid Committee. It'll go to town council.
I'm sorry, I should just say it's 50%, but we're gonna allow the select board to review that during, you know, to adjust that over time, right?
I thought it was.
I can talk to you about it tomorrow.
I thought it was supposed to be up to 50% or 50%, not above that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just proposing 50%.
And to be clear for, you know, those who are not part of the conversation, this would be basically allowing us to shift the property tax, a portion of property taxes for seniors onto the rest of residential property taxpayers. So it does not get spread amongst all taxpayers, it goes only to residential property taxpayers. That's how, that's the model that has existed in other communities.
As opposed to business?
Correct, yeah, and I've talked with the assessor, you know, we could sort of, you could try to offset it by classifying the tax rate to try to make sure that everybody shares in it, but you would be speculating how many people are gonna actually qualify for the program at the time you would have to do it, right? So a burden only gets shared amongst the residential property taxes. When you do that, it's gonna increase the residential property tax rate to be higher than the commercial, industrial, personal tax rate. So that is a consideration. It does not require any appropriation, it does not need to be put into an override. It's something that would happen as part of the tax rate process, but I, you know, I don't, I don't know how much that got discussed with the committee, but when we talked about it with, I don't know, I'll start talking about it, but my immediate reaction was to say, well, we can go, we can shift the burden back, but you're gonna be speculating at that point, you're not gonna know how much you have to actually shift. So it's a moving target each year, you won't, you won't be able to guarantee that you have the same rate, so.
Somehow Redding does an offset on their commercial property.
So they have tied their classification to the program over the years, I understand.
Yeah, they do an offset on this to pay for it, tell pay for it.
They ship.
Yeah.
Drift it.
Yeah.
So that's something we haven't done for this one, so I just making folks aware of that.
Well, for this purpose only, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I assume that you would want to try to level the rate so that everyone's paying the same rate.
Yeah.
So when does that decision get made?
December, right, and we decide that in November, December.
When you set the tax rate.
Oh, when we set the tax rate, that's when we just, if this passes.
Yeah.
Yeah, commercial shit.
So this passes first, and then we deal with that.
Yep.
But that, we would be to explain that to the tax, especially we have an override.
Yeah.
The override is on here before this.
No, this is before the override.
Well, the override should be first before this article's on here.
Or you just make it.
Without a doubt.
Or you have to just make it very clear that what happened with this.
Of course, because I think we did ask, it might affect, I think the assessor said maybe, should say 30 or 300 taxpayers.
Yeah, I thought it was the three or four.
Opposed to how many seniors this is gonna impact when their taxes increase on their home that don't get this, which is designed to help seniors, but it's really gonna impact them.
Small amount will get it, a large amount will pay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Everybody does.
The override should be first.
I agree, I mean, I don't know what anybody else thinks, in general, even if that wasn't on it, I think the override should be first.
Where is the override?
Because right now you have, right now you have.
I mean, everybody just sit there.
Well, there's two things, there's increases senior tax rebate, right?
Why would that be before the override?
At one point, the discussion and the feedback we were getting was to put the dollar on in the override, so that's why it's first. But now we're not talking about it.
No.
Why are we not talking about it?
Because it gets shifted naturally, you don't need to raise and appropriate it, it doesn't, the revenue doesn't go away.
Well, not the senior tax rebate program.
The tax rebate.
Not the senior tax rebate program does not.
Yeah, I'm talking about Article 7.
I know, but Article 16.
This comes out of the overlay.
Comes out of the overlay.
Yeah. So again, the reason they were both first is, one comes out of the overlay, the increased senior tax rate, the second one, at one point, the conversation was about actually appropriating money. Which we've since figured out we don't need to do it, and shouldn't do, because we're gonna be double charging people for that point.
So that order should be changed.
It could be changed.
No, that's the only one to do.
I think that's, is that what?
So the override is gonna be in the operating budget article, which is new Article 17.
Oh, I see.
Sorry, 18.
18.
So what you see there, you don't see the departmental detail because we haven't decided it yet, but that's where you're gonna see the columns, fiscal year '24, fiscal year '25, override, fiscal year '25 with override.
So do we agree that that should be?
I know it's not what we.
It's just those are easy to knock down, I mean, the two, the two we're talking about are fairly easy to get through.
I don't agree with that, I think it has to be really explained what the.
Oh, it'll be explained.
It should be explained what, and you're presuming we're gonna pass the burden along to business here, I'm not in favor of that at all.
No, I don't think we're not at all.
We're not gonna chase out the little business that we have.
We've never done that.
We shouldn't, like Redding does, they put it on the backs of business owners. Now, every business owner in Redding is Jordan's Furniture, there's little business owners that are significantly impacted by extra tax for no services. I don't agree that we should do that here. And I also think the few that it benefits, you have other ability for other types of programs and services and abatement, that doesn't outweigh the many seniors that it's gonna impact by having to pay more taxes, and we have an override here, so.
I can also tell you that should the override prevail, there'll be more seniors in town that will be eligible for the circuit breaker, which is triggered by this too, which is not a bad thing, just because what happens is, I said, what's gonna happen is, is if the override prevails, if the average family home is up $1,700 a year, I mean, I do a number of people's taxes there, and some people are just on the cusp of qualifying for some of the senior circuit breaker, they don't get the full amount, but they get a portion of it, or they're just about to get a portion of it, but you up their taxes by $1,700, that pushes them over and they qualify for the tax break from the state. So if there's 300 now, you know, there'll be more, there will certainly be more who'll be eligible, and this will certainly help, because, you know, it helps those that are still gonna be in town and need the break.
Yeah.
And, but I tend to concur that I think anything that's revenue oriented, even this, these two, should come after the override.
Yeah.
I think the operating budget should be, because that's what the major thrust of this whole town meeting is, get that decided, and however that's decided, town meeting's still gonna decide whether they wanna increase the fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, first question, and the second one is, are we gonna offer this other program, which is gonna cause a shift, you know? So, again, I think it's a great idea, but I just wanna let everybody know that there'll be more people eligible, just because of the increase in taxes, because of the override. Every year, there's more people eligible, even with two and a half percent, more people become eligible, so.
Oh.
Because people move too, but.
Do whatever you want.
I didn't realize that. Were people waiting all night for the easement?
It's okay, I'm fifteen, so.
I wish I knew that, I would've took that out of order. Is it too late to do that, or?
We're almost on with this.
All right, I mean, I feel bad now.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't realize that. I thought you were just a very interesting citizen.
They probably are, yeah. They are. Fortunately, I mean, we can defer the conversation, but. So, the two senior articles are gonna go after the operating budget, is that what?
Apparently so, yes.
Yes.
All right, I keep going.
That's decided.
Why don't we stop right here, take care of this?
Well, that's, I would like to do that, I'm, I just, I'm a little bit tired right now, that should've been done, I would've took that out of order.
The short version or the fast version?
Of what?
The easement discussion.
Fast.
The short and fast.
Yeah, we already had a discussion about that.
Yeah, we have.
It's before us for a reason.
So, Melcony and Subaru's agreed to pay us nineteen hundred dollars for consideration to be able to discharge stormwater onto town-owned land, so that it will ultimately get into the stormwater collection system in and around Mark's Park. We've designed something, we initially, remember, we went to town meeting in June, we sought the ability to grant easements for two parcels, we only need to get to grant it for one, it's uh-
Zero.
Zero Wilma, right?
Correct.
I have it right.
Zero.
Zero Wilma, yeah, we don't need to do anything on Elma. I believe the town engineers talked to the neighbors down in the-
Oh, the town engineers, they're waiting all night.
They're waiting till we have-
Yeah, I spoke with the director about her, she's actually a new homeowner, two home road, and she was off the project, she was listening earlier, I think, you know. She emailed me, said she would like on this, and I told her I'd show the drawings, and she was excited about it. But yeah, the project, mitigate the flooding that happens to two and four home road and direct the water to solidly pour in, in existing swell.
Yeah, in the existing town water, right?
Yeah, in the swell that goes up to Mark's Road.
Mr. Brown, that lived there for about forty years, was before us last year, advocating for this too, he sold to these new homeowners.
May I say one thing?
Yes, may I?
The town meeting vote was to authorize the grant under the terms and conditions that the board deemed suitable. What I see in the packet is a grant of a perpetual easement, I would, I would suggest we not do, we grant the easement, but not necessarily a perpetual, especially if this property or anything gets redubbed, or we want use of that town-owned land for something different, and it has to be removed for whatever reason. I don't think nineteen hundred dollars is enough, nineteen hundred dollars covers the, probably the recording and things like that, I don't think it's enough to grant perpetual easement to this run into the property, so I don't, I don't know what, why, no reason for it being perpetual.
That was the value, but the assessor came up with the property that we're talking about, the land is not high value, we asked her to come up with calculations based on the portion of the land to be used for stormwater discharge, she came back to us and said that's what it's worth, they agreed to pay.
I'm happy to explain a little bit, like, so what is?
I think, you gotta, well, go through the chair.
Sure.
Tell everyone who you are, hanging out with us.
Yeah.
Craig Marshand, Marshand and Associates, with the engineers representing the applicant, Subaru, two sixteen Eighth Street. The reason for the permanent easement, a portion of this, this actually, I don't think it's complicated, but there's a proposed temporary easement, it's just for the temporary construction phase, if you will, it's very, very limited here, and there's also a little bit of the existing pavement spills over onto the town-owned property, so when they repay a lot, we're gonna cut that back, so it no longer extends onto the town property, and that's just the temporary easement. The permanent easement here is only about six hundred square feet, and the reason we permit it is because we will be responsible for the maintenance in any, we won't even really repair it, but any maintenance and upkeep of the drainage swale would be our responsibility, even on the town-owned portion, that's why we permit easement.
You can be responsible in the permanent easement?
Well, the reason we only grant is those rights on that property, we couldn't build on it, we can, we're not an owned property, it's just a right to use it for those, the uses listed in the easement language, which will be approved by town council, and then all those folks. Oh, part, yeah, there it is up on the screen, so the small area between the two red dash lines, that's the permanent easement, as you can see, it's six hundred and sixteen square feet, it's just so we can upkeep that area.
Man, Jen, to the town engineer, right now, where's the water going, going in?
So, Main Street is at the bottom of the page, eventually up to a few hundred feet, there's a thirty-six inch existing culvert that discharges, let's just call it the bottom of the page, and it follows a swell, you can see those dash lines up there, right there, there's that outlet there, and it just follows the swell, which is where the engineers are proposing to connect in and meet, which is a little to the left towards that property line, I believe.
Yes.
So they need that, you know, that twenty, thirty feet to get to where the existing swell is.
Where is this water going right now, the water on the property?
There's just a huge existing puddle at two home road, basically to where the swell will be coming, it's just a lowest point in between properties, abiding from property six, all over there, so just trying to grip the water to the left, I mean, eventually it makes it out that way through, after flooding two or four home roads, it's going to make its way that way, so I would be right for you.
Why is this happening, has it always happened, is it something new, and if it's something new, why is it happening now? Is this tonight?
My understanding is it's been an ongoing, long-term problem, and our client wanted to make it right, and the neighbors, of course, wanted the same thing, so as the engineers said the water does go through those properties, it basically ends up back in the same, you know, stream, if you will, and then it makes out to the wetland, it says we would grab it before we use our property and get it in that same stream, before it burdens the neighbors. It's a very small area, so we're just gonna put a small little swell in there just to grab the water and get it work going anyway, without bothering the neighbors essentially.
The topography there hasn't changed in years, I mean, the Honda barn was there before, they may have, they put the building there, redid the building, in the same footprint, but the Honda barn was there, and down below where they have the work bays, again, it's been there for forty years or more, and it's, as the Browns live there, and they've been living with it for years, and talked with Roger Gruh, who was a previous owner of Melcony's, you know, about it, and it never got taken care of, so, Mr. Brown was, I know at the time, very excited about the fact that at some point, it was finally gonna be taken care of, and he came before us, oh no, actually, he actually never made it, because it was another late night thing where he left, and then we talked about it, but he waited all night, and it just seems to be a good idea for the director butters to get this relief, and this is the solution.
This is any kind of?
No, I don't, I wouldn't agree to it if it's a perpetual easement, I wouldn't agree to that, tiny enough hours. I understand what the purpose is, why, it's their issue, this is what they've come up with as a way to solve their, the drainage issue on their lot, I know the department is there, I understand where it's going, and it's filtering out, filtering out the culvert, I get that.
So what is the alternative?
No, I just want out of, one of the-
No, but is there a different alternative?
Don't make it a perpetual.
Just don't make it perpetual.
They would still have to maintain it, it's primarily on their land for the benefit of their land, it's making it right for their parcel, otherwise you wouldn't be here asking for it, and we already had that presentation before, so it puddles on that parcel, on not the Honda Subaru, right? It puddles on Subaru, Subaru wants to correct it for their parcel, not just for the parcel that it runs off onto.
Well, I don't-
So I think it's the right thing to do, but I'm just having an issue with us saying they can have a perpetual easement.
Does Subaru have an issue with not making it perpetual?
I don't know of a specific issue, I guess for me, off the cuff, my concern would be maintenance of that, do we have to formally seek permission from the town every time the lot is formed, the scheduled maintenance, which we did submit an operation maintenance plan, which the town has reviewed and agreed to, which states us as being responsible, or the property owner, I should say, so if it does change hands, goes with the property to maintain that. If it's not our land, or we don't, and we don't have a formal easement, only our land anyway, but if it's not our land, and if we don't have an easement to use it, do we have to go through formal channels to act, get permission to go on that property just to clean it out? And the cleaning would be by hand, it wouldn't be heavy machinery or anything, of course, but that would be my concern, if we have to add more riprap or top dress, any of the stone, do we have to reach out to the town and get permission to go on the property to upkeep this thing? I just don't want to make it a burden on anybody. And I think the representatives from the town, from my understanding, went forward with this proposal, so it's been getting kicked around for a couple of years, we made a few last minute tweaks, or a deep dive to comment, saying this is what we landed on.
Again, town council didn't express concerns in relation to perpetual easement, or as opposed to?
Not my knowledge, no.
Did the town council prepare the easement document?
I have to check the document, again, do you know whether they prepared it, have they prepared it?
My office will carry it. Oh, the plan, yes.
No, the easement itself, the rent of the easement.
Yeah, that was from, you know.
So John gave us a template?
Yes, and I just filled in the parcel numbers, but he filled most of it.
Did the template include the word perpetual when it was given to you?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
Can't you talk about it? I just, I don't know what the alternative is, is it just strike the word perpetual, or is it some other?
Yeah, but then still be responsible, we're granting an easement at their request, it's still be responsible for maintaining it.
Is there a default, through your matrix, is there a default term that would be in effect if we remove the word perpetual?
Non-perpetual.
No, I mean, like, number of years, or how would that look?
Well, I think you would have to talk to town council about that, I can't give legal advice on it, but.
No, I just, I don't know what the alternative is.
Nor do I want to hold up your approval of it, because I know you're right, it's a while, but I do have an issue with perpetual, a perpetual easement. What happens if we end up deciding we need to do something in there, for whatever reason, and we're, we've given them all of that interest, that they can keep that forever in there, running with the land?
So, would we be talking about a term of years instead of perpetual, is that the alter, is that the, I don't know, is that the alternative? No?
It's a grant of easement that gets recorded, and the obligations are written in it, and anyone that sees this, and if you, if you just pass it along in the way that it's worded, it goes to whoever it is, to the town, says we don't want you to have it anymore. But a perpetual easement is, we're giving our, the interest perpetual, it is what it says.
Typically, you know, I'm an attorney, obviously, either I'm an engineer, I'll survey, and they know more about easements than I do, but typically easements are easement or a temporary easement, which is why our construction one's clearly identified as temporary, and end of the day, the town would maintain ownership of that land, it's not gonna become our property, so the town owns it, they'd just be giving us a right to maintain, for, I haven't seen the easement language that your attorney drafted, but it'll say, we have permission to use that land for X, Y, and Z, that's it, we have permission to do that on it, we don't have permission to do anything outside of what the easement allows us to do, so it wouldn't be like us taking over the land, you know, it'll just say to maintain, it probably says to maintain it and repair as needed, something to that effect, I'm sure. Like I said, I haven't seen the language, so the town attorney would have to finalize that, and our client would have to sign it, but it's agreeable, attorney.
All right, well, how does the board feel, do we want to have that clarified, or do we want to buy that in?
Sounds like we should get it clarified.
I mean, this isn't the first easement we granted, you know, I would think that the language the town council prepared is consistent with what's been prepared for other easements that we've granted.
I mean, I don't know how much is-
And what is it, six hundred square feet, would you say thirty by twenty?
Six hundred and sixteen square feet.
Huh.
Thirty by twenty.
What's that?
Thirty-one by twenty.
Thirty-one by twenty, yeah.
Well, Jen, I don't know how much, we can waive it, but I don't know how much is gonna, I'm fine with the way this, like, whether or not we're gonna, I don't see it as an issue.
I have faith in what was presented to us by town council, I guess, at this point. I recognize the concern, but, so, I'm okay.
If I could add that-
We're tired.
I don't know, we mentioned that it does have to go through CONCON, if it's non-physical law, you know.
So this isn't filed for us?
No, it's gonna be reviewed, conservation.
Well, it's still filed, we granted the easement, but as far as whatever else can be done, what they're proposing to do still has to go through conservation. We're still granting them the easement.
Yeah, prior to work, we have to file the conservation front notice for that, we've already spoken to the previous agent about that.
I think they did already.
I think it was a preliminary discussion, I don't think that was on site, I think it was Leah, maybe?
Yeah, Leah.
She did get us on site, we did not file it, we wanted to get through this stuff first, and then file, we will formally file a notice for that.
The town council used the word perpetual, right?
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna change their mind. Look, we should do a vote.
So we can't, we can't change that ourselves, we can't strike perpetual from that.
We probably should.
I know Mrs. Menchelli is not gonna vote for that, but.
I'm only one of five.
Are we prepared? I'm looking for the board, what do you want to do, do you want to?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I authorized the chair to grant, to sign the grant of easement.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second by Mr. Stu, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
From a day, so, but it passes, three to two.
Okay.
You agree too?
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, sorry about that.
Oh, no worries, thank you.
Nothing's ever easy with us.
Actually, just if it had eight o'clock, we would've had much more to say, but we're too tired.
We would've been calling the attorney, getting him on.
I can't believe we only have three select board candidates for the selection.
All right, back to the warrant.
And even he went, even he went home.
Thank you, sorry.
Even he went home.
I know.
I mean, this would be a good practice.
Well, he threatened, he threatened to leave early, but I never fled. He wanted me to just go home right now?
All right, back to the warrant.
Where were we, Article?
Where were we?
We were Article seventeen.
I'm looking for blue.
Article seventeen is where we're at, and we moved on.
So we're moving the two senior-related articles to after the operating budget, is what we're figuring out?
Yep.
Yes, we agreed on that, yes.
Lauren, I know you made a comment about the fire department recruit, the paramedic training, I believe it was in there, is this the article on the screen there?
Yes.
Okay, so it was in there already, so. Continue scrolling through here to the easements for Pine Ridge Road and the Chestnut Street Bridge, the director of Public Works has informed me that both of these are better suited for consideration at the October town meeting, based upon the timeline of the conversations with the budding property owner, so whether they were both, supposed, in theory by you, I've already taken liberty of crossing them off, the draft warrant here. I think you're all aware, the planning commission did vote after our last regular meeting to submit the three articles for MBTA community zoning, so they are on here as Articles thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
How did they vote?
They voted four to one.
Four to one.
To forward them to the select board for consideration at our meeting. They have not yet had their hearing to do, to make a recommendation, but they are gonna be scheduling some, I think, information sessions leading up to that hearing, your eyes out for that. Article thirteen- Article 34, renaming North Parish Park. I think Ms. Gonzalez explained that the Veterans Event Committee seeks to remove that for potential consideration at a future point in time. Article 33, to establish a new veterans committee. This would take the place of the previously authorized Veterans Memorial Committee and Veterans Events Committee. The veterans agency is working on a new, new charge. The reason it has to go back to town meeting is because the Veterans Memorial Committee was actually established at town meeting, so we have to get it moved to town meeting to create this new, single, consolidated committee. Articles with what were 36 and 37, the fire station reconstruction project. I don't know if Ms. Hurl, but is still on the call here, but the opinions I'm going to share are my own rather than on behalf of any particular committee. If we're fairly confident, and it sounds like we are, that an override vote is going to go to town meeting, I think we should be at the point where we're taking the full construction project for the fire station off the warrant. It's a dead exclusion funded project. I know we normally leave these things on to try to generate interest and get discussion going. I think we can achieve that with the second remaining article, which would be for additional funding to get us through the phase of finalizing the design. It's listed now as Article 34. So we still have that opportunity to consult with town meeting. I don't have a dollar amount for that at this point. Mr. Parisi has been working to try to come up with both a projection from our Vertex and from HKT, the two, the architect and the project manager, and determine what's left from previous authorizations as well. So that might warrant its own agenda item at a future meeting. Mrs. Gonzalez, on May 6, it could be, when maybe Mr. Parisi could be here, Mrs. Hurl could be here as well. Just to sort of fine tune exactly what's going on there rather than picking only it to only the warrant itself.
So a lot of our articles.
This is, this is going to be a long, in a town meeting.
We cut it back, obviously, but I think we sum off, but there's still a number of articles.
Yeah. It's actually kind of good you put the override in so you hit that date, you know, that actual date, in case we have to do a second town meeting.
That's a great point, yeah.
Yeah. That'd be a good reason to push it in, make the deadline. This is potentially a very long meeting.
This is like the WrestleMania of warrants.
That's what taking the fire construction off.
That would have been a, wow, awesome. So Article 1, 10 million. Article 34, 25, let's say you. That would have been great.
We're getting a little.
All right.
Flag policy.
Flag policy.
Vote to approve the first reading of the flag policy.
Second.
Wow. I have a motion to approve. I have a second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussions?
Very straightforward.
Taking over my job. No further discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following made for appointment to the Youth Services Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2026. Elizabeth Rymel.
What was the last name?
I think it's Rymel.
Actually, I was with her today and that is, I asked her how.
We were with her Saturday.
Visiting her daughter.
I was, all right.
Did I pronounce it right?
You did.
I did.
Second.
She was one of the two people that were at their meeting Saturday.
Yeah, she told me. All right, we have, oh.
Second is already.
All right, we have a motion, we have the second, and the liaison.
Yeah, it's me and a great background, strong recommendations by everybody. Be a welcome addition to the group, so glad to have her. Thank you for stepping up, Elizabeth.
Yeah, a long time her parents were involved and lots of things and.
What was her maiden name?
Das, Daisar.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's like that, yeah. Mary Lou, Mary Lou.
Yeah, Mary Lou.
All right. Role call.
So name, role call, Mr. Oliver?
Elizabeth Rymel.
Mr. Walter.
Elizabeth Rymel.
Elizabeth Rymel. We'll just do that. And change Elizabeth Rymel.
Nice to see her, another generation involved. The Daisars were.
Very involved.
Very involved in the community, very involved.
In fact, we gave an award to Mr. Daisar.
Yeah, Larry, yeah.
All right, I'm going to move on to meeting minutes. Madam Chair, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the December 22, 2023 meeting.
Second. We'll then give that one to Mrs. Manuelli.
Oh, wow.
Of a motion, and second by Mrs. Manuelli. Any further discussion? Here we're done, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the February 12, 2024 meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manuelli. Any further discussion? Here we're done, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the March 2, 2024 meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manuelli. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for February in the amount of $7,784.75 as follows. General, $6,434.25. Labor at 822.50. 20 elm at 528. For a total of $7,784.75.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Oliver.
Nobody wants to get in, huh? It's okay. Nobody wants to approve legal bills.
Any further discussion? Here we're done, all in favor?
Aye.
Town administrators report.
The board members, I think, between the five, you made all of my comments earlier in the meeting, so I'm also.
Oh.
Provided all the updates.
Second.